A lot of animals this evening, we have a lot of guest speakers, if you will. Mr. Deputy clerk, you follow all who say, absolutely, Mr. Kelly. Here, Mr. Coe, here, Mr. Ma, here, Mr. Paul Street, here, Mr. Robinson, here, Mr. Reed. I'm here and this is absent. All right, everybody, please rise for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, has anyone signed up to speak this evening, other than our distinguished guests?
No.
Okay, before you, you have the meeting minutes from October 6, 2022, please review them as it's time. Are any changes to the minutes that you guys can see? There are none, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 6, 2022. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy clerk, can you call the role, please? Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Ma?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Street?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
I'm staying.
And Mr. Kelly? Uh, Mr. Reed?
Hi.
Yes. Forward. Oh, that's true. Okay, so the last is I go. All right, so next, we have some appointments. I, they're not here, no one's here? Not even the chairman?
No.
Goes against our policy.
I don't think they were.
No. Table. I think that we're on the table, the appointment ability to show up. I'll entertain a motion.
All the information was submitted.
I understand, Mr. I will entertain a motion to table the appointments at this time.
So, most.
At first. On the second, sorry. Questions, comments, Mr. Deputy clerk? Mr. Ma?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Street?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Coe?
Hi. Much pass.
Okay, Mr. Hedges?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first thing we have is a presentation from Crown Community Development for a new community design for Prairie Ridge North. North of Kelly Road. No formal actions needed tonight. Uh, this is a courtesy of presentation that we've offered to Crown before the process starts and will be presented to the planning zoning commission next week. Uh, for their official beginning of this process. Dan Olson is here, who's the director of development for Crown Development, he'll introduce the concept. What this is, is uh, what's been built now in Prairie Ridge, maybe south of Kelly Road. And that's pretty much underway now, all the infrastructure is either there or under construction. But the northern section, uh, they want to reorganize to make the market similar, it wasn't even closed in a year and a half ago. With that, Dan?
Good evening. Uh, thanks for having me, uh, thanks for having us. Before I turn over to our planner, who will go into into detail on the plan, um, I thought I, um, I go into why we're doing it. You, you, most of you were here when we did this in Oakstead, few of you were not. Same reasons, basically, um, and briefly, uh, originally, when this project was announced in 2005, it was a different time. It was a time of large lots and large houses, right? And then in 2008, world changed. Housing crash. Basically, what happened, uh, we, you know, new buying homes, right? Millennials were delayed in starting families. We're living in the basement of a lot of the city. Reasons for that, student debt, obviously, they couldn't afford it, they couldn't get jobs, they couldn't get higher mortgages. And, you know, a lot of other reasons, so. We, we've been here since 2005 and we sat on this project for a long time and it started, started getting some activity a few years ago. So. 2020, uh, things started changing a little bit. The millennials started leaving the cities, right? And they, they started buying homes, they started forming families and they wanted a house. But they were a different buyer than they were, than the buyers were in 2005. Basically, they, they, they enjoyed the city, they enjoyed the smaller, smaller properties and they wanted to, um, move out here, but they didn't want the big yards, they didn't want the thing, the glass, they want to maintain, they want to be able, they want to be flexible, they want to be able to travel. And so it's a completely different buyer and that's why we're here tonight, we're, we're looking, they want, um, they prefer common open space areas versus, you know, in their backyard, basically. So our plan here tonight is changing what we had approved in 2005 with the larger lots, going to smaller lots, more open space, more common areas. And hopefully you'll agree that this is what the market desires and wants right now. So that'll turn over to Rich Olson, the area webber associate, to look at the plan.
Good evening, my name is Rich Olson, I'm with Area Webber Associates, we're a landscape architecture land planning firm out of Wheaton, Illinois. And we, we prepared the concept plan for discussion tonight. I also was involved in Oakstead and last time I presented you guys, it was during the height of pandemic and I was coming to you from the, the screen up there. So it's, it's really nice to be able to be back and just be able to be, it's, it's much more, uh, nice to be involved. So, so what I thought I would do, so thank you for having me and us. So what I thought I'd do is just briefly walk you through some of the existing conditions and what we call planning factors that we use to sort of guide us in preparing the plan. And then really walk you through the plan itself, uh, and look at some of the amenities and some of the details that we're, we're working on and hopefully get some feedback from, from y'all. So what I've got up on the screen there, uh, as you're aware, the site is generally located south of Big Timber, south and, and west of Big Timber. You've got Melms Road that goes along the northern boundary of the site. And you've got Kelly Road that's, uh, along the southern border, which, uh, which goes along the south side of, of the site. And you got Harmony, which goes straight up through sort of the center and really takes the site into two halves. You got the eastern side and then you got the western side. So when I'm talking through it, you, I'll refer to the east side and then it's really three parts. Cause on the west side, you've got the southern portion and you've got the north portion. It's about 958 acres, that's a, it's a good sized site. It's a, it's not very often that you get to work on a site that's close to 1,000 acres large. And this one is hard to comprehend at this scale, so I'll try and do the best I can to talk you through some of that. The, um, some of the existing conditions that you see up here that we look for are things like the vehicular access, pedestrian access, the topography. And on the topography side of things, it's sort of a rolling farmed area currently. The red Xs that you see up there are high points on the site and the yellow Xs represent the lower points on the site. The, um, the light blue, and you can barely see it, it really, next time I'll highlight it a little better, it runs in through this area, swells through this area, is, uh, is floodplain area and that is, tends to be on the lower portions of the site. The, um, the green areas are the tree areas, which we would, of course, be looking to preserve the tree areas. The tree area that you see up in the northern section is also where there's an existing drainage way that kind of flows from east to west and eventually goes right off the site at the lowest point at 842 on the west. We do also have a couple of utility easements that, uh, that really affect what we can do and really challenges us a little bit. We've got utility easement runs diagonally through here as well as down in this location here. Uh, one of the other things that is nice about this site is it's fairly open and we've got plenty of access from all the major roads on the, on the vehicular side. So now that I've spent two minutes, you've all got it down really well, right? Let's move to the next side. Needless to say, we look at all these factors and we try and utilize a lot of those, we put the detention on the low side of things and we try and build on the high ones. So here's the, the concept plan that we have before you tonight. So overall, we're proposing 1,978 homes over the 958 acres. Which is approximately 2 billion units per acre on the entire site, lots and lots of open space. And I, I'll kind of walk through that, which is really, it's really a neat plan for the residents as, as we get into it. But essentially, we've got a mix of single family, three types of single family. We've got, uh, two types of townhomes, we've got urban style townhome and a traditional front loaded town. We've got 630 townhomes, 239 smaller single family, 250 so active adult style homes, which we can get in and talk about as well. 416 single family medium size, 443 large single family, that's kind of the breakdown. Now, what's neat about this site, and I'll just orient you a little bit here down on Harmony. We have major road accesses or entryways off of major roads, one off of Big Timber. And several off of Harmony. And what we do is we're bringing a spine road through the entire site, it sort of weaves its way through. And that spine road has pods off of it. And those residential neighborhoods, we call them, are different types of, of homes. And they range from the single family, um, here and here and here to the townhomes. We also have a future school site right up the entrance. And that spine road really helps us to kind of navigate the site from both the vehicular and the pedestrian access, which is nice. Because if you live in any of these pods, you have direct access out to the spine road, which then gets you to the major roads, makes it real easy to navigate. And then also, uh, if you look at the plan, it, it pretty much is the same, whether you're looking at the east side of Harmony or the west side of Harmony, both in the pods, we created the same concept where you've got the weaving fine road through there. Of course, that'll be heavily landscaped on both sides and it'll look really nice. Kind of go to the next slide. Maybe zoom out just a touch. So this is the east side of Harmony, I wanted to drill in a little bit because it's such a large site, it's really hard to sort of comprehend until you start looking at the site in, in further detail. Each of the neighborhoods really is designed so that there's a really nice internal open space. So for example, neighborhood Y, you come off of the entrance to Y and you come into a nice little open space park on the interior of the site. A lot of them have that and we've done that intentionally so that we can create a nice open space amenity interior to each of the pods. Furthermore, on the outside of most all of these sites is green space. You'll, you'll notice all over the place that you've got, uh, green space, whether it's detention areas or just open space. And that's really nice for all these residents that have, you know, access to these open spaces behind it. It really creates a, a nice cluster, it's called a cluster development. So you've got the spine road, you get the neighborhoods clustered together and then tons of recreational open space around. You zoom out just a little, can you zoom, uh, go up just a little bit so I can just show you one of the, no, the other way, sorry. So off of Kelly, one of the main access, we've got two of these large community, we have 30 acre park to the south that you can access off of Kelly. We also have a dog park and then we're going to propose a pathway system that leads from the dog park up to and past the future, uh, school site and into the neighborhood. So you'll be able to filter down through the trail system that leads you along the spine roads and then eventually get down to the park system or bring it to the community park. And we've got one of those, if we go to the next slide. So this is the, the area that's west and north on, on Harmony. Same, you'll, you'll recognize the same type of, of concept, you've got just a really nice spine road that weaves through and then a large community park, 41 acres up in the northwest corner. And then the trails will lead to it. And then each one of these communities, again, you'll see these small interior parks, they might be play equipment, they might just be, if it's an active adult section, it's probably going to be more like a seating area or maybe some sort of garden feature. If it's a single family, it would probably tend to be maybe a play, play area. Uh, but we would design that for, you know, each, each of the individual, each individual pods. Now, this, this one is really nice because the, the open space weaves all the way through it diagonally and then starts to go south. And we've also incorporated a large trail system that continues south. So this currently is a large farmed area and we're going to reclaim that to, we're going to plant it with prairie. So it's going to be super environmentally friendly now, you know, from that standpoint. And it'll be incorporated into the, um, overall pedestrian active pathway system. Be really nice. If you go to the last one. So that trail is continuing from the north down through and then it ends up into the southern section. So you, you essentially can, and I'm, the last slide, I'll show you the overall pathway system, but you can create a giant loop if you're a runner in this whole community with both, uh, with a trail system that loops through the whole system. But again, the same type of concept, you've got, um, a winding road, spine road that comes through. Each of these neighborhoods has a really nice little open space feature. The nice thing about I, which is down here, there's an existing woodland, it's just gorgeous. And, and we're, we're, we're going to, you know, save that area and actually probably enhance it, a little pathway through it. And just make it part of that smaller community. And what's nice is we can, again, the idea of coming in off of the main drag with a nice entry feature terminating right into that open space. To the north, we've got, uh, you know, we've got the underground utilities to deal with, but what we've done there is we've incorporated a super long. If you're familiar with this area, the, the municipal, uh, complex is right, existing municipal site is right here on the, right on Harmony, yep. And what we're going to do is create this really long linear open space parkway, uh, where we're going to use the underground utility easement as part of a, a long linear green space. I haven't quite designed it to its fullest potential yet, but the idea is that we'll probably have a pathway that leads through there that'll separate the multifamily from the single family. And then we're, we're thinking about maybe a little bit of a dog park in the central space here and then continue that path out and then eventually we will get down to the spine road path. And again, you'll see, you know, lots of open space and green space. This is a, there's so much things here that I could talk about. We don't have time to talk about it all, but here's another pathway system that connects down to the south path that's already been developed and already in place. So if you're, if you're in this community, you'll have tons of trails to, to negotiate. You'll have, like, I could see if you, if you didn't like this play equipment over here, this little play area, you could spend some time over in the wooded, you know, play section. So to speak, I, I think we'll probably tuck something in there that'll be pretty neat too. And yeah, if you go to the next slide. So if you zoom out, and this is, this is one of these things, it's such a large community that's hard to graphically represent, but the red line represents our, our, uh, main trails. Obviously, you're going to have sidewalks everywhere, but that's, the red is our trail, main trail system. And it's seven, 7.8 miles of, now don't cringe, I know you're going to have to build that. We're, and we're trying to, you know, make it make sense, but it's like seven, almost, almost eight miles of trail. You could, you could train for a marathon just here, you know, which would be great, uh, for any of you runners out there, or bikers. So that kind of gives you an idea, you've got a continuous sort of, um, all the way down, you could cross Harmony, you could go all the way up into there and up into the future community parks. So you could get to the community park, uh, up north and go all the way to the southern community park and, and really interact with cars on a minimal basis. Because once you're on the spine road, you only, the, the nice thing about that spine road is you only have several entrance points into these communities. So it's, it's not only a safe way to travel, it's, it's a quick way to travel too. And we're, and we're just, we're just excited because this plan, as you can see, all the green is, the, the way it's designed is that we've clustered the, the units in a way that we can take advantage, preserve what's out there from a, from a natural standpoint. And turn what is essentially, some of the farmland areas are going to be turned into these just beautiful prairie areas. And if you're just like over in the side here, I could see walking up through this trail system and you'll, you'll be like you're in a different world because it'll just be a large prairie, uh, area. Anyway, I, I will stop rambling because I, I love the plan, it's a great plan, we're super excited. We've got lots of different product types for lots of different folks, uh, all the way from your single family residential to the active adult buyer, who's the older, older buyer, to sync, uh, to the townhome, uh, living. And even in the townhome, we've got the traditional style townhome, which is your front loaded townhome. And then we've got your urban style for the people who like that three story walk up condition. If you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
I've got a couple. Um, on, uh, on the NG section, that spine road coming into Harmony? Is that going to be, well, it's N I, NG and I, it's the, the lower right, uh, left hand.
Yeah, sure.
Is, is that going to be a stoplighted intersection?
Oh, you mean where, where meets Harmony?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't think it'll be warrants, to be quite honest. I, I, I wouldn't expect that it would, I would, um, I would expect that Allen Road would probably be a stoplight before that or Kelly Road perhaps.
So would that be the same over in the upper right hand side, the NVNW, where that spine road, uh, goes in the big timber?
Yeah, you probably wouldn't have it like that.
And then the other question is, you've got, um, 70 plus acres of park. Is that going to be something you're going to be talking to the park district about?
You have been talking to the park, there's been quite some time, um, yeah. So our, our original annexation group in 2005 contemplated that we would, uh, feed those parks to the village and then if the village chose, they would pass them on to the park district and that would be at that time, I assume it still is. As such, we've been talking with the park, the director of the park district that are very interested in both of those parks. They have plans for both of those parks. Obviously, it, you know, it's, it's your prerogative whether or not you want to accept them and whether or not you want to pass them on to them, but, um, that is, that is the plan right now.
Now, just for clarification, we're talking about the, the community park areas, the pocket parks that we're talking about with playground equipment and that kind of stuff, those should be under jurisdiction of the equivalent?
Yeah, I should have wrote that down because it's a, but you can, let me just run through it for you real quick. You got the future community parks, which are 72-ish acres. You got the neighborhood open space parks, which is probably about 41 acres. You got naturalized, uh, areas and detention, which is about 83 acres, existing floodplains and wetland open space, which will have active components of trails through them. We have an astounding 456 acres of open space, which is almost 50% of the site. And it's not unusable from a standpoint of the residents, it's, it's all stuff that we've incorporated with its trail system, so it's active and passive. Yeah, it's kind of breaking.
I should mention on the trail system, they, we haven't approved trail system from the old plan. If you take, compare this plan to the old plan, I encourage you to do so. There's a lot of similarities, but there's a lot of, a lot of reasons this plan is so much better, right? Open space being one, trail system being another, but mainly the diversity of the product, which makes it all much more marketable.
Mr. Hedges, that didn't make it into the pack at the original plan and I bet that some of these trustees have never seen the original plan, can you make sure that they get that?
We can share that with them, this is just a courtesy meeting or.
No, I understand.
Presentation by Crown, but yeah, the official process will start happening.
No, I, I.
I'll, I'll share that, be able to provide plenty with, with, uh, some, some analysis with the board in the next few days.
Yeah, that would be good because it's all going to be fresh in our minds and so then to be able to compare this to what they, is already approved in on the books.
Sure.
That would help. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Paul.
This one, uh, the active adult area, what, is it just townhomes or is it other town styles as well?
Yeah, so, um, so if you, if you look at the, can you go back to the first page, that'll highlight the second areas? So we have very specific pods for active adult buyers, which are single family homes. Uh, second page, sorry. And if you zoom out a little bit, I'll just point them out, like up in the, and each area, think of it almost like three projects, but in each of area, we have an active adults, uh, area for, so for example, this would be your active adult pod within this site here as well as here. And we've designed that and we've located that in a very specific reason because of its access to open space and trails. Up in the upper area, you'll see the very top off of Melms, perfect location, isolated, uh, separate entrance. Uh, it all almost feel like its own private community, which is super important for active adult, but that would be up in the top area up there. And, um, I guess we don't have one down in the south, down here, but we do have, yeah, so up there and then over in these two areas here. And then, of course, you do have the traditional townhomes, which are, you know, that they, they're front loaded, so they could be also active adults somewhat, but I'm sure they have two stories.
We should be clear too, when we say active adult, this is not age restricted, this is age target, right? So you're, you're developing ranch homes, type of product that, you know, active adults would buy. By the way, should, I was mentioning, Drew raised with us a direct word on product and, and market. So you, if you have any questions from that regard, these programs could actually better make it.
And, and just for clarification on, uh, even further, the, the way they do active adult areas is they essentially market the product, which is a single story home and all the amenities within that home. And of course, there's also the maintenance situation. So you're buying, you're buying the home and then you don't have to mow because they're maintaining, mowing everything. So there's, and so there's a, there's a separate fee for that, that attracts the, it's all set up and, and it's not that you could get a, a family in there, it's just not set up quite for families. It's, it's really geared toward the active adult.
Just about, do you have a question?
Yeah, a couple, it's sticking with the active adult. Do you, the two sections there and then you've got one way far away. The separation is, is what concerns me, but I'm going to just say also then where you've got NU and NY. NT just kind of sits there, so if you've got a senior area and then it looks like the other half of the street is not.
Yeah, yeah, I know, that you're very, you're very observant and I'll explain the reasoning behind this. We, we have been working and of course, nothing's set in stone at this point. We're, we're working through it and we had different pods and different areas, but what is, what is happening in the market is you've got the stuff that's building the trend of development from the south. And these folks down here are going to need to have product right away. So the way the developers work, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, they want to be able to market and sell right away to a prospective client and buyer. So the ability for them to start and get all the utilities and all, there's actually ponds that are built here already. The, in this first section right here, you're able to open up, they call them almost like stores. So you have a storefront for this type of product, you have a storefront for this type of product, you have a storefront for the active adult and single family. So right in this area, you can open up and start selling to, and it's important for them because they need to sell different products to keep things going and going in the right direction. So the reason for that is they've got all the products right here and then you've got a second phase to the active adult here. It's a little counterintuitive to what you're thinking because some active adult communities, like if you think Grand Dominion or Del Webb, they just have giant areas of active adult. But what happens in the market nowadays is you'll find people, they want to live in these pods, they don't necessarily have to have giant resorts and, you know, pickleball courts and all stuff. They just want to have a nice area for, for themselves. And it accomplishes the, the ability for the buyer, the builder to open up that store right away, if that helps.
We've got this type of product in both our Highland Woods community, just down the road from here, and then in Bartlett, a small neighborhood geared toward the active adult. And it could be, it could be first time buyers, if they want a ranch, they live in there, it could be divorcees, you know, if they're looking for the downsized. And so it's not all, you know, seniors, right? You know, so they all live there and they, they want to be in the midst of everything, but they kind of still want to be, you know, with their small, you know, group. You know, like, you know, that type of product, I guess, but it's, they're small neighborhoods and they're finding right next to the single family homes.
It's not age restricted.
It's not age restricted.
So it's just active, so you're going to have them speckled with children all the way through all those active adult areas too.
We, we don't see a lot of children moving in those.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, what happens, and it's just, you can kind of see what happens in the marketplace is, uh, typically people with children don't want a ranch unit and have to pay a separate fee to mow their lawn. It's just, it, it doesn't work as well, see, but you, you can do it, you can have it, but majority of the time it's set up so that you don't. And, and you don't guarantee it because it's not active or adult restricted, but it's active adult. And it's generally speaking in the marketplace, they're going to gravitate toward the same type of product, but over in this area here or over in this area here. And it's geared toward what they want. but over in this area here, or over in this area here, and it's geared toward what they want.
The kind of maintenance is a big part of that, right? You know, so they're, you know, uh, a lot of younger families, you know, they're fine maintaining their own properties. They don't want to pay the extra money, they have somebody else do it. But that kind of, you know, those, the folks that don't want to do that, they gravitate toward those neighborhoods.
Yeah, because they'll be like, oh, I gotta pay another fee, whereas a, whereas a senior will be like, oh, thank God, I can just.
So there's, uh, there's no, um, um, type of a clubhouse that's looked at for this particular development?
No.
Okay.
No, but you might find, like, when we get into these areas, I've got, we've got designed spaces, and then those design spaces, whoever the developer eventually is that buys that, whether it's Dr. Horton, they will want a specific thing, and it might include a small pickup. If they think there's enough there, they'll, they'll do stuff like that.
It won't be a clubhouse.
But it won't be a clubhouse.
It will be that kind of, you know, those types of things.
Are you looking, I mean, so then it's gonna be a spattering of, you know, older adults, you know, so. I guess I'm looking at the children to see how, I mean, because you've got a, a one school site that's there, but those same students are gonna also be feeding into the high school and the junior high and stuff too. So, I mean, what's your expectation of how many kids are gonna feed into that community?
So.
Nineteen seventy-eight, you said, was the number of units.
Well, at the school district, you use calculations, I used to do them, you know, and there's a formula for it. I think that's a little more difficult, when you have these different types of stuff, but you know, the, the um, the demographic information that they use is fairly current, it's pretty accurate, so they do a pretty good job of it. Uh, we have, as we did in Oakstead, we have been in discussions, in discussions with the school district. Um, they're reviewing this plan right now. Um, I think it's safe to say initially a positive reaction to it, but they need time to take a look at it, make sure it makes sense for them. Our goal with the school, you, you may, when you see the other plan, originally, we were, we were putting a school at this location right here. Problem with that location is walkers. They like walkers, right? They don't want to bus kids. And we had ran into this issue in, in Oakstead, right, crossing the street. So we thought, well, how about we move it down to here? And now, now you can use the walkers. You still have these kids over here that'll have to get across, but, you know, it's centrally located, it'll feed all these, these, these folks over here. So um, I think, you know, once.
Those kids up there will fend for themselves.
But, yeah, we, we thought it's a great location.
That would probably be.
It's a good location, you know, and we think, you know, once they complete their analysis, I think it'll be hundreds of centimeters.
And it's also keep, it's important to keep in mind that there is a current plan on the books that has been since two thousand and five, and Hampshire High School opened in two thousand and eight, nine. So they were already planning for the developments in place. Now, granted, this is, this has changed, right, since, and then there's been other development that happens. The school district does a really good job of keeping up with um current building permits. They're always in constant conversation with the village as far as how many residents are here. And then they're like, what the development plans are, or develop, like, you know, like, you know, as I said, they speak with them on a regular basis. And, I mean, it's a concern we all have, right? We want everybody to be prepared for it, but ultimately, that's on, really on them. You know, and it, it's not like this development came out of nowhere. You know, we're, there are changes that are opposed to the development, but it was already here.
Our relationship with the school district is as long as our relationship has been with the village, and very good relationship with them, and with the park district and everybody else.
And we, we also have, just for purpose of, of safety, because, you know, getting kids down here, we, we are extending the trail system all along our property at this point. We're picking it back up and, and bringing it all the way down. So you will have a future, as soon as this comes online, you will have a continuous uh bike trail that will lead them straight down and across. And you'll have a bike trail that's all on the south side here, and we intentionally put the bike trail on the south side of this collector road, so that they'll funnel across, but then be able to come down. So there is a method to the overall concept, which certainly helps to get people to the school.
Is that center area then, is that an existing farm that's still there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's.
There will be one farm that kind of goes around it then?
Yeah, and we've got connections to it.
Okay.
Yep. Everything beyond our limits is unincorporated, you know, except for that, this area down here, which is part of, part of.
Somebody will develop that, that piece as well.
Yes. Chelsea, Rob, so you have a question?
Uh, yeah, the, I'm down in the lower right portion of this, on the, the dimensions, the specs of the the lot sizes, and it just seems small. Is that what the market is showing, the wires?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm true, right, yes.
The wires are on a smaller lot?
Yeah, they, yeah, the, the, the wire lots are kind of not a thing anymore, and I can specifically speak to Tames, because that's eighty feet, eighty-five foot wide lots, um, about fifty-five foot buildable house. But me, I think on average, when I did the calculations a couple of months ago, the average width of the house being built, there was like forty-three, forty-five. Because Lennar offers a product from thirty-five feet to fifty-five feet wide. So out of like the thirty homes that are in the ground, I think the average width wasn't like forty-four.
Right. In that case, then they're getting bigger yards on that lot. The lot didn't change, just your same size.
Right.
So, so people are building smaller houses with bigger yards.
Right, but that's why builders are kind of saying, we don't need the bigger lots because of that.
That was, that was a previously subdivided subdivision, right? And um, before the crash, right? You know, and when we did that, and um, they didn't want those side lots. They're hate for those, for those, they're too big, right? You know, and that was, you know, it was a legacy from before the crash. They would have preferred smaller lots.
Yeah, I understand, but to your, to your question though, and I had, I don't know off the top of my head, Mr. Ray knows, but they have a ton of building permits that are going out and a ton of new house development. And I wonder if the, the lots. You have the bigger lots.
I think, Dan, you should speak to the discount that you sold those lots for.
We did, we, we basically, and Drew can probably speak better than I do, but uh, we basically sold those lots, you know, sold eighty-foot lots at a sixty-foot price, right? To get things moving and to get.
To Lennar.
To Lennar, right? Um, but it would certainly, because they didn't want an eighty-foot wide lot, right? They just think that sixty-foot lot messed with their will to pay for it, so um, but that, I mean, if you, if you. If you take a look at, if you take a look at what, what is getting built out here, right? Those are smaller lots compared to what the original plan was out here. Now, we have these smaller lots here, but those are mostly the active adult areas. Active adults, as you said before, they don't want seven-and-a-half foot side yards, they want the five-foot side yards, right? You know, they, they don't want the big lots.
So like, we, we do like seven-and-a-half foot side yards here on this.
So my question is, uh, the previous uh plan that none of us have was approved back in old time.
Yeah.
So for you to come, you're gonna have to come back and get approval for shrink the lots.
Yeah, so, so um, that's, our plan is to come before you first, you know, with the concept plan, right? And there's a constant plan process with the village. So um, get feedback like we're getting right now, go to a plant commission next week, and ask you for a vote and an approval on the concept plan. Once we have that, we're looking to, we, we're gonna go right into preliminary engineering and preliminary plating. Same thing we did for Oakstead, right? So the entitlement we're looking for hopefully early next year is preliminary platting approval. Once we get that, um, and once we have interest from our builders, we will go to the final engineering and final plating phase of it, neighborhood by neighborhood, right?
I do suggest when you do come back, give us previous lot size and what you're intending to, in clear black and white.
Trusty, in addition to their um, report, you'll also get an analysis from the staff the next time you see this officially. We'll compare the old to the new, give you the density and, like we did for Oakstead.
I'm just looking for lot sizes, but.
I know, I would be, I would be very clear, the, the lot sizes will be smaller. And, and back in two thousand and five, the, the idea at the board at the time um was pretty adamant about, and it, it used to be a planning idea, you start small lots, culture in, in, in this, in the middle of the village, or, or central area of the village, and you get bigger lots as you go out. That's not how it's done, right? First of all, nobody's buying ten thousand-foot lots anymore, right? That's what they were, fifteen thousand square foot lots in some areas out there, hundred-foot wide lots. Nobody buys that anymore. Nobody has product, none of the builders have product to put on a hundred-foot wide lot anymore, so um.
But the, the, but the, the thing that we're doing here is, is, is the small light lots with the cluster plan and concept does introduce the ability to utilize the open space. And it's, you're still getting a density. The density is, it, just to give you an idea, what we're proposing here is two dwelling units per acre over the entire site. Two dwelling units per acre uh is very low uh for, for the, for a development. Typically speaking, on a residential community, developers want to get somewhere between two and a half to three and a half for a single family. And then for a townhome community, uh, especially a, a front-loaded traditional townhome, they're doing four to six dwelling units per acre. And then we also have the urban style on this plan, and the urban-style townhomes want to generate somewhere in ten, eleven dwelling units per acre. So just to give you, just to kind of give you a little bit of perspective, that's, those are the kind of densities that you would get from a, a modern subdivision, but because we have the open space that we have, we're able to say, hey, look, you have two dwelling units per acre spread out over the entire site. People are, are, have the ability to go out and have their home, that they can manage down the right way, be able to afford it. And then at the same time, be able to uh go out and, in this case, basically go anywhere they want into spaces that are just gonna be great.
And that's the clustered concept, right? And that was, I can remember in two thousand and five, it was around, but it was just starting, right? People started thinking about cluster development, right? As Rich had, smaller lots, closer homes, but a lot of open space, fifty percent open space here, right? And that's really taken off, because that's what this, this buyer really appreciates. Today's buyer really appreciates that clustered concept. They want to be out on the trails, they want to be in the open space, they want to be, they don't want to be sitting in the backyard by themselves. They want to be out with their friends and their neighbors in common areas. And there's a lot of common areas, there are lots of parks, right? But lots of trails, eight miles of trails, not including the trails you already built down here, right? All the way into the village, so that's what they want to do. They want to be out and about, they don't want to sit around in their, in their backyard so much.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely a, a very nice experience from the standpoint of owning a piece, being able to afford it at a certain price, because when he talks about the lots and that he had to discount it, the DR Horton or whoever came in and, and bought those, they're like, oh, well, oh, we don't care how big the lot is, we'll offer you this, because we know our product will fit on this. And it could be a hundred-foot wide lot, but we'll only offer you this. So what we do to compensate for that nowadays is to make sure that we appropriately design the site, not like it's a big grid or there's a bunch of homes. It's, it's a padded design with lots of open space. So you, you really get the best of both worlds. You get the smaller lot that they want, for it, at a pro, a proper price, and then you get all the open space for everybody. And it's maintained by the association too, so it looks nice.
Chief Herman, I don't know if you're willing to field a question. Um, the reason, one of the other reasons I ask about the, the spacing in between the houses, obviously for fire safety. Um, you look at, for example, Del Webb, um, some of those houses, if one catches on fire, you can touch the other one from one of them, and that, that one's going up too. So is there?
It's always a huge concern.
It's, I, I know it's a concern, is there like a, a number of comfort level with separation between residences that the fire department, fire safety?
There's not a magic number, but usually when you look at, um, using an example here. Uh, when you go out to Lakewood, you know, there's pretty good spacing there, probably twenty to twenty-five feet.
Right.
You know, but still, depending on the development of fire, by the time you arrive there, it gets well involved in fire. That reheat does ignite those houses. And again, as I explained to you when I was, when I did presentation for the referendum, well, Huntley lost three houses with winds of forty miles an hour.
Right.
So those are all things that you have to look at and factor in.
Right, and this is in the, this is in the home, I mean, we could see, get some good winds with them through there.
Yeah.
Uh, as I can, just go on here, you know, if you look up at the corner of Harmony and Melms, where that rectangle is, that is our station three site. And I just did the calculations in my head, but uh, we definitely would have to have our third station built for this, um, because it takes our call buying up to well over three thousand cost per.
Right.
When this is built up.
Right.
So you had an Oakstead, and this, and the Tames property, our, our call-in would be well over three thousand.
So just on side effects, um, so our current annexation agreement is seven and a half feet, fifteen feet between the halls, right? Um, and that's what's getting built up there right now. Um, that's what we're proposing here, so we're.
And Del Webb, Del Webb for, for purposes of comparing a lot of the Del Webb type stuff, and a lot of the active adults usually have five inside yards. So we, during the process of, of, of working with the staff and looking at all that stuff, that was one that take seven and a half.
Right. And I know the good thing, minimum.
We make that a minimum.
Live there, there's a few that are, it's, it's five foot from house to house.
Well, actually, it's not quite that close, it's about ten feet on the, you share a pad, so you share the foundation. It's about ten feet on that side, the other side is about.
Okay, okay.
But they're, they're, and they're.
It looks awfully tall. Like, if I'm living next to you and your house goes up, my house is probably.
So silver color is like there right now.
Yeah, yes.
Honestly, to my knowledge, um, correct if I'm wrong, we looked into this a little bit. The village hasn't approved anything under seven and a half.
Right, and they, they had requested as little as five, and we, we asked them to go back.
And so, you know, doing, doing this is not, or looking at this plan is not starting something that we haven't already done.
Right.
But, you know, everybody likes the bigger yards and all that kind of stuff with this.
I get that's what everybody likes, and that's what everybody wants to buy, but we also got to consider safety.
I agree too.
I agree. Now, this is a seven-and-a-half foot side yard minimum, or is it on every lot? Yeah, so that's a good, that's a, it's, I usually talk about that too. So seven-and-a-half minimum, so on a single-family lot, uh, their product lineups range, and so you're not gonna get the widest product on every lot. So what'll happen is you'll get a, a fifty-foot billable area, sometimes you get a thirty-seven, or eighty. So you, you'll, you'll vary in, in every single home will not be the exact max.
Right, so would the minimum be fifteen?
The minimum, if you had two of the biggest products next to each other, would be there.
Or you might have fifteen on one side, maybe it's skewed a little bit.
Right.
Yeah. It's just a, I mean, and I know nothing about the market or anything, but we're now kind of entering a recession, and mortgage rates have gone up. And so to launch something like this, I mean, you're the experts. I mean, are we gonna have a bunch of empty areas, because we have to put it on hold like we did in two thousand and five? So predictions, I guess.
Oh, I, I can't predict, but just talking to builders that we have lived in the issues before, I mean, during these last couple of years, they have just run through inventory. They are struggling to replace it. Maybe this slowdown gives them a chance to kind of catch their breath. Now they may be looking at things that are in the pipeline, that are under contract, they haven't bought yet, they're still going through the planning process with the other municipalities. So they might be in a place where maybe they can get their, um, they can think clearly now, and how do we plan to make sure now would be the time to um reinvest in what they already have under contract, or maybe, well, this, maybe this place is not good. Let's take, pump the brakes off, so let's maybe look at a different area. But they, a lot of the builders, like Dr. Horton and Lennar, they, they have inventory, they need new land to uh replace. So I, I can't predict what the recession is gonna look like, but from what I've heard from outside consultants like John Burns, they're, they're saying like, twenty twenty-four, that we might see like the housing bottom pricing. Um, but that bottom housing pricing is still gonna be higher than at the end of uh twenty twenty. So that they think maybe that things might start to pick up, which, you know, because it's gonna take, um, like a good year.
Yeah, before, yeah.
Before, so timing-wise, it, it might work out to our benefit.
So, so demand has subsided, right? I mean, they're still, the millennials still need places to live, right? And, and empty nesters need to, you know, move in, downsides also, so demand stuff, their existing home inventory is still historically low, right? So the difference, thing does change, interest rates are going up, we try to control inflation right now, and charging pricing is, we try to, it's many homes. Right, you know, we saw it when COVID first came, we just talked, you know, talking about tonight dinner. You know, we thought COVID is here, all right, we're done, here's, here's our next big crash, right? So went down to that a month later, it went like that, right? You got to be ready for this, right? And the builders get that. Well, we got to be ready, because it takes a long time to get the entitlements, right? But it takes longer to get the engineering done, get constructed, and provide that inventory to the builders, who, they don't close until they have our product that they can build on the next day. So, you know, this is gonna be a few years before we have lots to sell. And I'm confident the market will have stabilized a bit more by now. Interest rates probably still be elevated, but maybe on the way down. Um, they're trying to, it's kind of like the stock market, right? You try to, you try to anticipate the ups and downs. We always try, we always try to just have enough out there to make sure. And, and that's a big point of why we have the diversity in the product here too, right? If this product's not selling right now, that one might be. If that's not selling, townhomes might be, right? So that's kind of why we came up with this plan, so.
Trusty Kelly?
Yeah, I've got just a couple of things I ask for consideration on. Uh, I think we honestly learned, but uh, from the current school opening we went through and some of the community feedback we had, I would ask that you consider moving you and Y, the active adult communities, and flipping it with G, the single-family home on the bottom left. It still gives it its uh kind of segregated, segregated is a bad word, but it's whole little area for the active adult. for the active adult, and it puts all of the single family homes on the same side of Harmony as a future school site, rather than an active adult in that area. The reason I wanna say that is, there is serious concerns that if the entire west side, southwest side of this development, the single family homes, that significantly increases the amount of children that would be walking across. Harmony, especially if it's not predicted to have a stoplight, which may be another discussion. Uh, entertain with accounting, I know they have to do road studies and there's a lot behind it. Like we had plenty of discussions about road studies during the pandemic. But that would be one consideration I would ask for, because the community could expect children to walk across that without a stoplight, I fear would be a, following another bad.
So, a couple of comments on that, we actually, you know, the original plan did have more active adult on this side. Um, there's a reason that we moved it over here, um, everything to the west of Harmony requires a lift station right here. That's two, three-year venture to get that done and, right? These lots over here, they have sewer and water literally goes through this area right now, we, we can put those on the market much quicker than we can that side. So we wanted to make sure that we can accommodate the multiple builders, and not a lot of builders in Chicago, national builders, that wanna make sure that we can provide a product for any one of them. So that we can be successful and we can, and the village can be successful, but sewer and water is here right now.
Would you foresee this, this phase of the development following the potential of the Oakstead, uh, process where? Because again, I, I agree, it's gonna be a couple of years before you break ground or sell to a developer, to, or a builder to build on here. Do you foresee having the school site develop prior to any of the homes in there, especially knowing a school within the community that's built is also a big selling point of that community?
Certainly, I'll, I'll, I'll have to defer to the school district on that, I know they're, you know, since two thousand and five, they've been aware of this, I know they're thinking about the school here. When they can do that, I don't know, I, I do know the school out there, um, you know, they had referendum money that they, they need to send or loses, that's why that school happened as quickly as it did, I'm not sure when they would build this school.
Okay.
So, uh, and, and to your other question, and you know, the, the crossing, this isn't Big Timber Road, we're not, you know, even once, when we were developed here, you know, I can see the kind of traffic, the background traffic that uses Big Timber Road heading into Elgin. This is Harmony Road, so it's mostly local folks here, they tend to drive slower, right, first of all, but I think you see the volume on, on, on this road of the traffic base out there. So, and, 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 you know, there'll have to be a discussion, like there was a discussion out there, you know, as to making sure this is safe passage for most children.
I don't know if we've gotten that discussion resolved for the other, but still, I'm going, the, uh, there was, I, I was gonna echo what trustee Paul Strini brought up, I mean, with, with the way that the, the economy is going now, job loss being a laggard indicator that they're predicting it's going to be coming next year. Uh, they're considering the Fed raising again over the next two meetings, not just one, and doing seventy-five basis points again for each one. So I don't, I don't think, I think you're right on the house price isn't necessarily gonna change, but the cost to own the house is significant. Right, whether it's some mortgage rates or whatever, maybe, so the, the cost of ownership will go up. Uh, and so I just, I don't think that affects your, your plan, but I think it is a consideration when we start looking at things. Of how does that affect the duration of the agreement that we're looking at, right? Is this another twenty-year agreement, is it another ten-year, we have to read whatever comes back to board for the new updated plan? Just for, for our staff too, this is a lot of additional homes, it, what is the net difference of what was originally planned versus what this new development?
We haven't concluded that analysis yet, we'll do that before this comes back.
It looked like you were looking for.
Yeah, I, I think it's, we, we should discuss it, right, it's almost seven hundred homes.
Seven hundred additional?
Yes, but understand, most of those are townhomes, right?
Well, it's, it's not the number of, um, what the type of home is, it's more of when we start having to plan for police staffing, training for public service out there and uh, things like that, that's why I bring it up, I mean, I know you're looking at long-term plans, that'd be something that can we afford to have seven hundred additional homes based on? What's looking at, what's that look like for staffing?
Let's not forget seven hundred more taxpayers too, right? Um, and, you know, you know, since the, as far as the school district goes, you know, most of these are townhomes, um, they tend to generate much fewer children, right? So I don't think the burden to the school will be nearly as much, um, but, um, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, we're being very clear, there are more homes.
Yeah, and, and I guess my last point to what trustee Robinson was saying about diagrams on the right. And I do love those, there's, there's things about the plan, I think it's great, right? My, my one concern specifically, and I know this will be a new lot size that has been added in, is the forty-four foot wide lots where the max home width can be twenty-nine foot, and if you have a sixteen-foot single car garage on that hall, we're now talking about fifteen-foot wide front facial without a garage, or a width garage and then fifteen-foot at max in that area, and then only sorry, what, so it's got sixty, sixty-foot gap, correct? Max sixty-foot gap, so we're talking, is this a twelve hundred square foot, fourteen hundred square foot max home if it was single family? And that's at seven and a half foot easements on each side.
Right, it's, yeah, those homes would be anywhere from twelve hundred to sixteen.
Square feet, probably just single car garages?
No, there, there, um, there are a couple builders that they have, one that's building on the market now, they have a, uh, two-car garage front. So it's basically twenty feet garage and then the other ten feet.
Nine feet.
Yeah, yeah, the front door, yeah, and the rest of the house. Uh, another builder has it in other markets, they, they are potentially thinking about bringing it out here.
Okay, then that looks like it's of your development, forty-four foot is a hundred and sixty-five homes in one neighborhood, and then.
And then seven. It's, it's, uh, it's currently right now on the plan, you've got the neighborhood J and neighborhood H.
So you have two neighborhoods. It'd be two hundred and, just under two hundred and forty homes, that would be a.
Yes, two hundred and thirty-nine, you're spot on, yep. Two hundred and thirty-nine, which is, which is, it, it is, uh, it's a marketplace that has been, just for, you know, sharing some light on. It's something that has been growing, uh, over the past few years, uh, it's hugely popular everywhere else in the country. But in Illinois, it's something that has been, um, ever evolving, and it's a product that is, is, is coming. And it's something that's, that is some, gonna be everywhere, and if it's done the right way. And I think what we've tried to do here is again, it's, it's limited, and it's a, it's an option, and it's, and it's a part of the cluster plan.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
And obviously, we'd have to show you some architecture, get comfortable with that, as, as well.
I, I just, uh, my, my, I made it to the board, and I made it to, um, you guys. Take a look at Lakewood, and there's a lot, there's an area of, of Lakewood that's got single car garages or single width driveways and tons and tons of parking problems. That is not something that we can miss this board, cause that is a huge pain for us, it's a huge pain for the residents because they don't have, they don't have basements. They have a single car garage, a single car.
That's why I asked the question, cause I'm looking at a front of twenty-nine feet, I'm like, I can only think, I didn't know there were builders that did nine-foot non-garage fronts, but I'm nervous of us getting back to a situation where just because it's a single car garage, now we have parking on the streets again or over the side.
Like that to, to, and we do a pretty good job of not trashing former administrations around here, whoever thought that that was a good idea, that they should never be allowed to be a part of any of it, yeah, because it is, like, like legitimately, it is a huge burden. Because they buy the home because it's the right price point, they don't realize they're gonna have all this stuff. They have a spare bedroom, they have a kid, they have two kids, they got nowhere to put their stuff, they put it in the garage, and then they got two cars. That ultimately, one of them always blocks the sidewalks, and then they're parking on the street, getting tickets because they're blocking a sidewalk, and on the, it's, it does not have.
It's just, we wanna do the right thing for the residents.
I, I'm just making it clear.
Yeah, I hadn't seen any, wait, the one that does build that twenty-nine, thirty-foot wide product, I mean, it's two-car garage. And I know Del Webb is going in the world, and I think they have some thirty-foot wide homes or thirty-three foot wide homes, they're, they're also two-car garage.
But, but parking is essentially the message that we need to, to figure out.
And to, to, there, to your point, those are also in the duplex home, right, yeah, but on the single family, and I don't see any duplex modeled on this plan.
That's correct.
We just don't wanna get into a situation that we have to deal with.
Yeah, agreed. We've not seen any products presented by any builders up here with single car garage.
Cause that, that is a little too fresh for us to not think about. Especially because on November first, the overnight parking restriction goes in again, so we're gonna hear about it, forget it. Surprise you.
See, you were saying, sorry, you were saying, you think probably three years would be from when this process officially kicks off, maybe three years before a, a builder starts breaking ground on something, three or four years?
But I think, you know, it, it, it is, it depends on the market, as we discussed.
Absolutely.
Yeah, uh, but, uh, it depends how quickly we get through entitlements, right? So it does take a while to get through a, in this final, um, that could happen as early as, you know, we could start moving dirt as early as next year. You know, begin the master, the site, which would then be delivering, um, delivering product, following, right?
And this, the south side, the very, very ridge.
Down here, yeah.
Is that full, like, it's fully sold to all builders?
Totally sold, all contract.
Yeah, it's all contracted.
Except for the commercial, all the, yeah, yeah, under contract, alright, and they're building.
And, uh, just for purposes of how this is different, you can kinda look right here. And you can see how we're, we're, we're going into a new level of design, and, and we're stepping, you know, stepping it up, not that this is wonderful development down here, I don't want, but there is a difference there, and I think they're really going to the next level of, of, of modern design.
And, and these lots are bigger than the lots up at Alamo, north and south, for sixty-five foot wide lots, so.
Trustee, just to add to that point, um, you commented on the green space, uh, we, we don't have to put their feet to the fire for green space anymore, uh, Leonard called about three weeks ago and asked permission to spend fifty thousand dollars additional landscaping on the perimeter of Thames Park, uh, because they, they did it in another one of their developments down south, and they started selling houses the very next day. So people see that landscaping going up, they see the screening from the visiting Big Timber, and, uh, they sell houses.
Well, I think it's, it's in alignment with, you've been in the meetings, and Mr. Ray, you were in this last meeting with the BBC where we're talking about, um, like the, the open land.
Green space.
And green space and the conservation areas, right? And I think if you're talking about planting prairie area, if you're talking about this kinda open flow, I know it's flood plain, so it helps that we're gonna plant prairie and flood plain, but I still think it kinda aligns to a couple of different discussions that are, so, a lot of the, they're looking to do that.
Yeah, and the market's demanding it really, which is great.
Right.
The vast majority is, is, um, naturalized areas, right? And we like to think we're planting here, and we're talking with subdivision, we're, we're the first in King County to do naturalized retention bases. It's good for a number of reasons, uh, it cleanses the water, it takes, it helps with flooding, all this stuff, and it's just the environmental right thing to do. Um, we thought that residents backing up those natural areas would appreciate it, and that they'd be dog lots. It turned out to be a premium lot, because the, the buying public is starting to appreciate open space areas, particularly if you have rail systems through that. But they're not cheap, you still gotta pay, you know, you, you spent a lot of money to build them, um, it is, and you have to maintain them, right, properly, which is on the moment, right? And it looks great.
If you have one last question. Sorry, trustee, I swear to God. This is just a conceptual plan, but in these conceptual plans, when you've created these pods, these neighborhoods, uh, and I completely understand the, the, your business strategy on that, thank you for sharing that. How do you foresee that affecting HOAs in that area? There be a single HOA for the entire space, does each area then end up with its own individual HOA? How, how do you first, how does that happen in this type of development?
Great question, and one that we've been deliberating internally, um, when we first did this, I think over ten or years, you know, it was one HOA for everything, right? And then also we started building down here, so we timed out in this one, right? So this HOA down here has been turned over, so we can't climb on that anymore, we don't, we're not in control of it anymore as a developer. So now the question is, one HOA for everything? Or, you know, to me, it kinda makes, makes sense to do three separate ones. That hasn't been decided yet, um, by the time they come back, really, my plan, I'm guessing we'll have decided that.
Okay, so the HOA isn't based on townhome versus active adult versus, it's more geographic where.
So the master HOA, you always, everything, it's gotta be a master HOA for either, you know, all three areas, or, you know, for, uh, everything. Or individual areas, but then when the townhome areas, they're part of the master HOA, but they also need to be their, they have their own HOA for common maintenance, right? So they'll, the townhome areas will, you know, these are, this area here, there's two HOAs, right? And that's just, you know, when you're in a common maintenance area, you gotta have two, understood?
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you for your feedback, I really appreciate it, it's helped.
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
I was just gonna, I was gonna ask, wasn't on the original plan, Big Timber extended through, or I'm sorry, Melms River extends through, tie right into Big Timber?
No, no, um, we don't own that property. Yeah, I think that there was, um, I know what you're talking about.
I know, I know, I could see that.
I, I remember, uh, the county at one time had plans for that, you, you just, I'm forgetting my memory, but I remember seeing the plan as well, that they were, that was their intention. I don't know if they've abandoned that or not, um, you know, I think you're probably more focused on French Road right now, but, uh, it's a good, great question. But yeah, we don't own it, so we don't have any control over it.
Well, thank you guys, thank you so much.
Josh, would you, we'll be back Monday, would you want the board here or vacation, if somebody wants to, if somebody wants to take a look?
We'll see you in November, right, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Hendrix?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that, um, we would ask your consideration, or we, we, we will entertain a presentation of a concept plan of subdivision for the property at seventeen North by ninety US Highway twenty. Uh, no promo action is required tonight, uh, this is the property that some of you know as the former Greer property. Uh, it's also known as Home Galleries, which is a business of the current owners, the Kaczynski family, uh, used to operate, uh, but do not operate any longer. Um, with us tonight is Mr. Kaczynski and his son Oscar, and, uh, Oscar has submitted a subdivision plan. Uh, this project, you have an agenda supplement from, uh, Mr. Ray in your packets. Uh, this product, this pro- um, property, um, is one of the, has a unique situation, it has two different types of zoning on the same property, on the same parcel. And, uh, so the, the Kaczynskis are now trying to develop the property properly, then you see a lot of earthwork going on up there lately. Um, so with that, um, Oscar, if you'd like to, maybe Josh, you can show the site plan, please propose and, uh, describe the subdivision.
So good afternoon, um, my name is Oscar Kaczynski. Um, currently, this is what we have going on, initially, how the Greers developed it, they developed it, pretty much the same concept was, half of it was highway commercial, and the rest half was a, um, residential area, the E two. Um, what we're just trying to do here is to make it seven acres commercial, or, I'm sorry, industrial, and make the residential side slightly bigger. And then we wanna tie in the retention pod with the residential side of it. Um, we have a building that I ordered, it's eighty by one forty-eight, it was supposed to come in November first, now the manufacturer's delayed a month and a half. Um, but we're looking at putting the building right about here.
Where's the existing house at now?
The existing house, the old farmhouse is up here, and the other house is back here.
Yeah.
If you guys remember the story, I mean, it's kinda like folklore at this point, uh, Greer family came to a board meeting, had everything all approved, guy went home and had a heart attack.
Um, he actually, um, died from sleep apnea.
Okay, well, so.
Actually, I have no.
He was already great, so. I'm glad you cleared that up, cause a rumor that I always heard was he came home and he dropped dead.
He felt, he died in his sleep.
So that's why this pro- this property's been in this kind of like limbo stage all these years, and it's changed hands a couple of times, and it's been, um, uh, some, somewhat of an interesting situation, so I think we're on the right path of getting it resolved now. And it's, it's off of twenty?
Twenty in Preacher's number, right?
Just south of the timber.
Yeah.
West side to southern Big Timber.
Okay, is that the one with, like, that had, like, the semis or?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. Oh, so the house there is the one back in the woods?
Yes, correct.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I was just trying to mentally picture.
Where we're located. Originally, it was expected that that house would have access to, um, to the, to the west, but that hasn't happened because the property on the side.
Gotcha, well, they were looking to do, if I remember correctly, neighborhoods in the back too, they were gonna do the cul-de-sac, if I'm correct on that. Behind the house over there, they said they were gonna do more neighborhoods, but that's just, you're saying what I've heard from the past, from individuals said, so that's what they wanted to do, like, from what I remember, this is gonna be a cul-de-sac, they wanna do a few homes, and then they wanted to push, there was supposed to be a road that was gonna go out to, um,
Catch up.
Catch up, okay, yes.
Okay.
So it's just gonna be that?
Correct.
Okay, now, all right, how many homes are in the back?
So just the one, we're just, we're not building any homes back there, so yeah, it's just saying that, the only difference is right now. The only difference is right now is we're leveling it out right here. There's going to be the, the retention pond. The retention pond was designed to have up to a 30,000 square foot shop. But I'm putting up an 11,000, just shy under 12,000, 11, eight or so. And that's the only addition right here is going to be 80 by 148, and we're going to go lengthwise, like, right there.
Mr. Hedges, you were saying it's a unique thing because it's dual zone. Is it dual zone, E2 and M2 now, and so this just splits the zoning?
No, right now, it's highway commercial. So they really couldn't live in the homes there right now.
This is to kind of write that.
Yeah, sure. So the, the home in the rear could be occupied as a residence after this is, is a subdivision.
So anyone have any questions?
Some not lived in now, done?
No, we're not, we're not living in the home.
Has the ranch ever been occupied?
The ranch was occupied by the Degreers, but since then, we've just been, we got a lot of stuff going on, so this has been A slow project, but we're trying to finish it up. The next year, I'd really like to be over with this project here, so.
Years from Josh and I, about twice the weeks.
So, I mean, it's, it's just a problem is getting material now is being a nightmare. Ordering a building, we ordered a building months ago, it's got pushed back. Gravel, gravel, got the gravel yards are about two and a half months out to get delivery. Concrete has skyrocketed. I mean, everything is just starting to get really crazy, so It's, we're trying to do that. The labor force is not there. People my age don't want to work, so that's, that's a whole nother problem going on right here or there, so. It's just, we, we got, with the, the issue we have with this property is because it's dual zone, I can't get a loan on it or anything, so I'm doing everything out of pocket on this. Because no bank will give you a loan on a property that's a single pin with a dual, dual zoning purpose, because default, They don't know if they're, they can't really foreclose on the building, or on, you know, the residents, or the commercial, so that's the problem. So this is where we have a problem is for me to do anything out of pocket, so financing wise is being a very hard situation on this for me right now.
And this, I know this is just for information, what's the schedule look like for it to go to building and zoning and then back to the board?
So this actually already did go to planning and zoning at their last meeting on the 10th, and they recommended 4 to 0, there's four members there, they recommended 4 to 0 to approve this Concept plan, so the next stage will then be for Mr. Kaczynski to finish all of the engineering approvals related to the, the site work and the stormwater. Go back to planning and zoning with an official plat subdivision, and then bring that back to the, that will be a public hearing at that point as well. And then bring that back to the village board for final, once all the engineering and plat is done.
So what's your timeline for that?
So that's probably the next month or two. I have to reach back to the engineers now, because originally, I mean, he just has to enter the building, it's the pond was designed ready for To uphold up to a 30,000 square foot shop that was initially that we were thinking about doing at the time, so he's got to add it in, and Can't see he's going to have much work there to do, but.
So are you looking to get this done by the end of the year with the zoning in that, or?
I, I would like to. I don't, with, right now with the building, they postponed to December 15th. I don't know If that's, it's going to happen for sure, but I would like to have the foundation of these dug out and poured.
No, I was talking about the.
The zoning wise, if we can get it done by the end of the year, that'd be great. If not, I mean, My hands are tied by winter. Once we hit snow.
But you, you intend to keep going through the approval process?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, all that, yeah, I plan on having that move forward, so.
I'd just like it right on the books. I, respectfully, I know how hard you've been working on that, and I know how hard it's going to be once weather changes and stuff. But I'm just, I'm wanting to get the, the paperwork side of it done completely, so that's the timeline.
The big timeline now would be for his engineers to submit the engineering drawings. He's already had preliminary conversations with the EI and He has to go back to his engineer now and have a new site plan.
Okay, so yeah, that's just the site plan. I mean, we have the engineering drawings for the building, foundation drawings are there. It's just, he has to enter in that building now into the, his drawing side of it, into the water side of it.
Awesome. Okay, thank you for coming to see us.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for joining us. You don't have to stay for the rest of the week.
Okay, and now we have one more. With that, we have a presentation of a concept plan of subdivision for a property in the Hampshire Grove Business Park. Known as the Old Dominion Site now. No formal action is needed tonight. We have witnesses tonight, Ken Neinhaus from Northern Builders on, on, online. And this, this project is immediately north of Pet Ag. It'll be about 20, it'll be 21 acres of the 62 remaining acres north of Pet Ag. So this property is already developed. It will include a extending planning road north To the site, sorry, Ryan Drive, north to the site. And you also have an agenda supplement from Mr. Ray in your packet. So Ken, would you like to?
Ken, I think you're muted. At least I hope you're.
Uh, how's that? Can you hear me now? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank, thank you very much. I had to get on the web tonight. Somehow I was having difficulty opening Microsoft Teams, but thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity this evening. Yes, we built Pet Ag about four years ago, and at that time, we had rezoned and annexed the other 62 acres known as Lot 2 Hampshire Grove subdivision, and we're very excited. We're working with Old Dominion to build a new office warehouse for them with, with truck storage on site. So this project is a project for them, a, a build-to-suit. We are extending Ryan Drive. There will be a lift station On Ryan Drive. It'll be private. That's what we've discussed with, with, with engineering. What else do I have to enter? So we're looking for site, a plat of subdivision approval. Not sure if we really need approval for Ryan Drive, or if that is just comes complimentary. As we seek, seek permit for it, we have submitted All of our engineering, which is almost final for Ryan, Ryan Drive. The site specific for, for Old Dominion And the Plata survey, which we believe to be fairly, fairly complete. We've actually submitted it for the next round for preliminary. I think the only things we owe is a traffic study, which will be coming in In the next week or so. Do you have any questions on this project?
Yeah, the, the detention ponds, one, two, and three, where do they drain to? The overflow? I can't.
I, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know. Maybe if the engineer is Tim, maybe Tim could explain it. I'm sorry, that's a little bit past my engineering expertise.
Well, we, you know, we've just received the engineering plan, so I haven't reviewed it yet. We did get a stormwater report, so we will be looking at that, but they do drain to the west. Similar to Pet Ag, and I'm, you know, not sure exactly how the outlets will function, but You know, Pet Ag drained to the existing road ditch on Widmire, and then across, a culvert Across Widmire to the west in a drainage way. And I'm not, you know, I haven't looked at enough to know exactly how these are going, but they will be going to the west for the outlet.
Yeah, I would assume they, they function similar to, to Pet Ag with some sort of restrictor with a very low release rate. I, I would be happy to have our engineer explain it in, in depth, but I'm, I'm sure everything is done in good engineering practices. Spacego is our engineer for both the road, the site. They did all the work for the Ryan Drive extension and the previous Pet Ag project.
I can see it here. There's nothing to do with, it doesn't show where they drain to.
Yeah, we do, like I said, we do have the stormwater report, but.
I could look at it very quickly. I do have the preliminary, preliminary engineering here. Pretty old Dominion site, let me.
If you go to, you've got the, what's called the preliminary utility plan that shows the three lots. Yeah, you can see that it's just showing, going to the right, right away in Widmire, so that's going to have to be, you know, assessed as far as Current condition of the ditch, you know, where it goes, current condition of culverts that might cross the road, where that goes. So I anticipate that's going to be in the stormwater report when we start reviewing it, but the ordinance is going to require, You know, an assessment of the condition and capacity of the outlet.
You're right. Tim, I think they just sent a long Stormwater management report. Matter of fact, I think they sent two of them. You know, to go in depth on that, I would be happy to, you know, have a meeting or something with, with the project manager from Spacego Who could speak much better than this than, than I can, but we're happy to answer any, any of your questions. I'm, I'm sure it's been done in good practice, and those things have been taken into account. I.
Get answered. Before, before we would move any further with this, and it goes through planning and zoning, we'd have to comply with the, with the stormwater management ordinance that we have in place, and all engineering would have to be passed before it reaches.
Of course.
So, so before, before we would take any action on it, we would, it would have to comply with everything that we have in place.
Sure, that goes without question. It, it may be in the, in the stormwater report that was, that was sent accompanying this package. I would be happy to talk to our engineer tomorrow morning, and Tim, if you would like to have a Zoom conference meeting with Irene Or any kind of supplementary letters, I'd be happy to set up whatever at your convenience. I'm sure we will give you the Appropriate paperwork documentation that will satisfy everyone. You know, we, we develop large tracts of lands, we.
If we're, we're comfortable with that. Trustee Kelly, you have another custody, you have another question?
I just tried to spark my memory, Mr. Hedges, when we originally talked about this site, and we did, we looked at Old Dominion. And I may have had a wrong understanding. I thought Old Dominion was the building that was going to be closest to Higgins Road, but in looking at this new, I'm looking at the utility one, because it shows all three buildings. It looks, are these two buildings now additional Buildings for that site, and is that one next to Higgins as close as it appears on this?
Well, first of all, there's only one building going at this point. The others are just. So at this point, it's just the Old Dominion building, and it's going on the property immediately north of Pet Ag. There was discussion about them going on the further north property, but I'm sure it has to do with the expensive building, the public road all the way to the north until there's another, another project. Which is pretty typical.
Yeah, we, originally, they were considering going there, but they preferred to be next to Pet Ag, and as a matter of fact, we are, We are starting to work with another company right now for another project Right next door to Old Dominion, so we are, we are seeing good, good activity here. We, we've, you know, we've worked with this site for, for four years, and there's finally been Activity on it now for these particular needs, and as everyone Is, is well aware, the economy is changing, but there does seem to be a need for these I would call them smaller midsize projects at this particular time, which is a, a great thing that we're seeing demand in, in the Hampshire location.
So can you just clarify for me then, what could, what are we being asked to consider different from what the original project and, and lot and Survey was versus what?
This is, this is really the first time you're being considered in this project.
Okay, understood. So this isn't a change to an existing, because I thought the existing, it was just one property that was being developed, and this looks like it's now subdivided into three different.
Well, it, it could be three, it could be two. I'll try and explain as best as I can.
The only sub project. Hang on a minute. The only subdivision that's happening right now is 21 acres for this project and the rest. So when they come in with another project, think of it similar to the Hampshire, the Hampshire 90 Logistics Park, where they had three, one project and two more coming. But they only have one in hand, and that's similar to this one right now.
Gotcha, okay.
Correct, but, but we did acquire the full 62 acres. And this is the first lot of the 62 acres being built. And depending on the needs of the market, it could be one or two more, or three buildings.
And, and then looking at this design here, proposal is, is not having Ryan Drive connect to Widmire, just go further than the original proposal?
It will never.
That, that is, it will never connect anywhere external of the 62 acres.
It won't connect to Higgins, so the only way from the canyon. Because we only have the traffic on a gas road, so we have.
That's, that's why I was, sorry, I don't read a lot of, of ones, and I was trying to follow where the road ended.
It will go to the, it will go to the, to the last building, pretty annexation agreement From 28, 2018. This is internal. It was annexed at that time with the intention of Ryan Drive extending to service this property.
Not connecting.
It's always. Not connecting, it's not feasible.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any? I don't, I mean, we're going to say it again. I appreciate you joining us tonight.
You're, you're welcome. Is, is it better for everyone to, to, to present by, by Zoom? I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do what, whatever you folks want.
It's been fine. Thanks a lot.
Okay, I, I, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask for a motion to authorize the village manager to execute a lease agreement for the Hampshire Police Department at 215 Industrial Drive, Unit D, with SCH Commercial Investments LLC. You have an agenda supplement in your packet for yourself.
Good night.
At least, current lease will expire at the end of this month. We've been a little busy in the police department, as you know, in the last couple of months, so this is something that Doug has picked up on immediately, and I've taken over myself from Lieutenant Jones as well. The property has been sold recently, and so we're working with the new owner, and we have reached agreement on the lease terms with him, subject to your approval. At this point, we're only asking you to approve this, the primary lease. We're not asking you to address the addendum A, but it's still very fluid. In fact, addendum A was not included in the packet for that reason.
So can you, can you explain what addendum A?
Yes, please. Addendum A is really three things. First of all, as it says in your packet, we have been awarded the grant for the Training that we talked about here several times before, a few times we talked about it. That was just awarded last week. We haven't received any documents yet or the timing. So we don't know really when the funds will come or when this project will happen, but we do know that it will. And, and some of the buildout is, by the way, the local match will be the, the buildout cost that we're going to the project. So, I'm sorry, the question again.
Is, like, just explain, just explain the reason.
Oh, they didn't, yeah, so we have to build out the space for the new training. This is, this is virtual reality body training, and Chief, Chief Pan can explain the training, too, if you'd like to hear that. But this is building out the space. Provide two cameras in the ceilings, access to those cameras. It'll be building out the spaces already there. We're not adding additional square footage, we're just finishing the spaces already there. Now, that, that expense has been estimated at about $41,000, but with prevailing wage, that'll go up another $28,000, so that, that should be about $69,000, $70,000 just for that alone. In addition to that, Chief Pan wants to make some changes in our lockup situation, and also How we enter and exit the building is not really convenient for our officers right now, so he's looked into some changes there. We're still getting estimates on those. So at this point, the other thing we've managed to do, and Lieutenant Jones did this before we took over, is he has Persuaded the existing owner and the prior owner, and then the existing owner, to roll back our costs back to what they were when we first leased the building 10 years ago. So we started out at 87. Got the numbers up. I don't have the number, my, 8700, right?
3600.
Sorry, 3600 and per month, and now we're up to roughly 4,900 per month because of the one, $100 per year increase for the last 10 years. Ammon to $1,000 a month, and then some of the buildout costs that were originally amortized in the originals lease have also been removed. So we're starting this lease at, at $100 more per month than we did 10 years ago, which is really. In addition to that, he has agreed to finance through, through Over the period, whatever time is remaining on the five-year lease, to advertise whatever improvements we'd like to put in the building. Now, the first time we spoke to him, that was, that was considered to be $41,000 or so. It could be upwards of $100,000 now, before we finish, once we find out what all these improvements will cost. We won't make any of those improvements, or make any commitment to those improvements till we come back. We won't make any of those improvements or make any commitment to those improvements till we come back to this board and ask you for those additional funds. So at this point, we're just asking for the base rent, the base lease, which is a five-year lease, starting at thirty-seven hundred dollars per month. Uh, a hundred dollar escalator, and then we're taking the um per per year. And then the the uh property taxes are divided by four because we're taking up twenty-five percent of the property. Um, so that's, that's what the existing lease is. Addendum A is is in the lease, but there are no numbers in addendum A and addendum A will just be blank for
They do have a question. So they're rolling back the rent from forty-nine hundred to thirty-six hundred. And they're going to increase the rent one hundred dollars every single month.
Every year.
Every per month each year. Every, it's, I'm I'm reading, I'm jammed, sorry, I'm reading
The lease of the
I'm reading off the analysis.
If if that's what you read, then I miss miss wrote it.
Basic rent will increase one hundred dollars per month each year. That's twelve hundred additional per year.
One hundred per month each year. So it's a hundred dollars, every year it goes up. On November first, every year it'll go up a hundred dollars.
Am I reading that wrong?
Toby, if I wrote it wrong, it's wrong. But what what happens is on November first, every year it goes up one hundred dollars.
So this year it's thirty-seven hundred dollars a month.
Am I reading that wrong?
No, I think that you're reading it right. I I don't, okay.
The the lease term says each year a hundred dollar rent escalator.
So so
Not each month.
Okay. And so constructive criticism, I guess, Mr. Hedges. It's not constructive. I had a question. And you answered. That's simple. That's what I'm here for.
Um, one question on just in general for real estate with municipal buildings, since we don't own the building, do we pay property tax or does is it only municipal owned properties?
Right. If we were leasing, the owners still ask to pay property
Okay, but but for this building that we own, do we pay property tax for this building?
No, no.
No. So if we owned the police building that we were in, we wouldn't. But in this case, any building we lease.
Right. And I I don't want to not say it because it is in your agenda supplement, but the plan is in our capital plan was to renew the lease. And that that plan is now almost, well, two years old. Um, the plan was to renew this lease for five, we had this option to renew for five years, extend for five years. And then the planning will begin as soon as we can um for the combined village hall and police department building up on uh Town Hall Road.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure how the property tax work with lease versus we own.
So what does that do to the uh future of the public works getting a new building because we're out of room? Does that just push it a little further down?
No, this this lease is just extending what we're doing now. We're not, we haven't committed to the village hall and the new new um uh police department building. I was just talking to Laurie this afternoon about the public works garage. Uh, we're going to be working on um a cash forecast for the next couple of years and the next month. So we'll have a much better idea. We're also updating the capital plan. Now, the public works garage is something I think about every day, Toby.
Okay.
Big priority. You just heard
So I email them every day, ask them to think about it.
Problems with uh, I mean, just getting pricing right now. It's ridiculous.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Well, I just, the one comment was, I can't believe that it's in two weeks at the lease ends. And it hasn't come up to the to the board or even presented.
I think that there was a lot going on in the police department and
New owner.
And then they sold the building. And so I think it was just a perfect, I don't want to say comedy of errors, but it was just the perfect circumstances in which this happened.
If for some reason you're uncomfortable with it, we can continue pay month to month until
No, and I see that if if we don't approve it tonight, it goes right into a month to month lease. Um, I I do see then also then it says thirty-six hundred on um the analysis and everything on the first page, page thirty-three. And then a number one on page thirty-four, it's thirty-seven hundred for month. So are we raising it already?
That's a hundred dollars.
For the first year. So going back to what it originally was, thirty-six hundred plus the addition. Okay, I just want to make sure.
That was not contractually obligated. It was just logical.
Okay. And and then the the whole build out of that, I mean, so that's been pulled. Right now, we're just looking at the five-year for the lease and
Base rent plus the property taxes as well.
Like you said, that you're working through it all together on what that
Right, yeah, okay.
Okay. I better know. Okay.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the village manager to execute a lease agreement for the Hampshire Police Department. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
All right. Questions, comments? Anybody else want to make another motion?
We're good. Okay.
Mister Deputy Clerk, can you call for a walk?
Just call the streaming. Mister Robinson, hi. Mister Kelly.
Hi.
Mister Coe.
Hi.
Mister Ma.
Mister Fashion, one zero.
I got this. It shuts off now.
Us and then recording devices. Um, with that, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance establishing a special graphics area in which projecting signs will be allowed in the village. I'll mention that uh items E and F are connected, uh so you may want to discuss them together. Uh, Mister Ray, would you like to explain this, please?
Yes.
So we were distracting you with this, sir.
Hint to our attention from, or rather, a uh current business owner on Washington Avenue inquired about putting up what's called a projecting sign, which is any sign that extends off of a building more than twelve inches. Um, projecting signs are currently not allowed in the village by ordinance. There happen to be two that do exist in the village. I can't really speak to how that came to be.
Uh, was one of village halls.
With our uh with our past building services provider, they must have missed that in the code when they were issuing the permits. But um, the new business owner inquired about it, so it came to our attention. And we took this to the Planning and Zoning Commission uh informally. And their first reaction was to ask the Business Development Commission how they felt considering uh they thought this should really just affect downtown and we shouldn't have these types of signs along seventy-two or up at the truck stops. Uh, because the really, the purpose of it is to create kind of a nice downtown walkable character uh similar to other communities that the BDC has discussed, uh such as uh Geneva and Batavia. So after taking it to the Business Development Commission for some feedback, they were generally uh fond of the idea with a couple of restrictions, such as no changeable copy on the signs and uh disallowing internal illumination of the signs, like a neon sign. Uh, then the Planning and Zoning Commission voted and they voted to four zero to approve both the special graphics area and the ordinance that allows projecting signs.
So like the sign out in front of the the hair salon and copper barrel and the sideways signs across the sidewalk apparently are against code.
Ours probably doesn't project out too far.
They can't project.
They're not supposed to Well, they 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 can go twelve inches off of the building face and still not be considered a projecting sign, right?
So not that it's close.
The purpose, so this this both corrects those two code errors and allows for, again, that kind of nice downtown character that the BDC and Planning Commission uh like the idea of. So the the special graphics area, the first uh ordinance before you is to establish a geographic area similar to the truck stops, how we have special sign regulations up there. Uh, kind of similar to that, this will create a downtown specific area to limit these types of signs just to basically State Street. Uh, the limits of that area were based primarily on the facade program and some other descriptions we've done of downtown for some grants to the state. Uh, and then also extending it up to Allen Road in anticipation of downtown extending that way someday. So first, sorry, I was just gonna say the first ordinance establishes that geographic area. The second ordinance uh allows projecting signs in the area.
And trustee Kelly, thank you for falling on your sword, but I think it was me that told the BDC that we'd already approved this.
So we were in the BDC meeting this weekend. I'll cover that in my so you understand what
So anyway, does anybody have any questions about this? It's basically another cleanup because we've already got them. Doesn't, so basically what you see out there at on State Street now is what's allowed. It's not like video signs and projection of that nature. It's a sign that projects off the front of the building.
That's something the beautification committee really likes. They like these projecting signs. They're encouraging all of the um, all of the side of
To be fair, this whole idea of the projecting sign on the village hall was something that was on the village hall years ago when we had the police department upstairs. That's where that village hall sign came from. It was the front of the building now is is redone in the style in which it was done years ago when the
Well, the signs are, I'm not sure the paint qualifies with the signs are.
Well, I have the only pictures I've ever seen were black and white, so I'm guessing that the gray is the same color.
So anyhow, does this affect any of the signs on the poles? Light poles or anything or just
Just by projecting signs off of the building.
Okay, do we have an ordinance that allows the uh banners on the streetlights or how?
They're they're, it's a temporary thing. There's no ordinance that bans temporary.
I didn't think that this was an issue, but this is, so I just wanted to ask. How dare you, I know.
Questions, comments? I will uh
Quick then, it's, I I was really confused reading this as I was kept going through it. So, but I did eventually get the definition of the projecting sign. But I want to clarify then, you can't have the neon signs in there, but yet it is allowed for lighted.
Right, you have exterior lighting pointing at it.
Like, so like at the copper barrel or like at Christine Michelle, they have spotlights that come down and shine behind the sign. But not, the sign itself is not lit.
Okay.
So have you ever been down to Nashville, down Broadway? They have all the signs in front, all the bars that are neon and they're lit. The signs themselves are lit, like video
Are we going to Nashville to check the signs out?
Would you like me to show you pictures?
No.
It was an example. I'm sorry.
We should go to, I I need to like go there and see them.
Well, maybe we should tell Willis and take a truck. But anyhow, the signs themselves are not illuminated, but the signs are lit. Or the signs themselves are not lit, but they are illuminated from external sources.
Okay. So that's the boost neck reflectors and lights shall be permitted.
So you need to walk outside and look at the
I really want to look outside. But, okay, that's
It's a lot closer than Nashville, Toby. Trustee Coe. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-eight and ordinance ordinance establishing special graphics area in which projecting signs will be allowed in the village.
So, again.
Questions, comments, concerns? Go call both Mister Deputy Clerk, sir.
Mister Robinson?
Hi.
Mister Kelly?
Hi.
Mister Coe?
Hi.
Mister Ma? Okay, it's Paul's training. Motion passed.
I will now entertain a motion to improve ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-nine and ordinance amending the zoning regulations in relation to community graphics to allow for certain projecting signs in the village. Again, questions, comments, concerns? Mister Coe, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay, hearing done. Can you call the hall, please?
Mister Kelly?
Hi.
Mister Coe?
Hi.
Mister Ma?
Hi.
This is Paul's training. Mister Robinson?
Hi.
Motion passed five zero.
And now for everybody's favorite uh part of the meeting, it's time for the monthly reports. There are three monthly reports in front of you. Police, financial and engineering. Please review them at this time. If you have any questions about any of the reports, we have Mister Wilson on the line, who is very excited to be answering any questions as well as Mister Lyons and Chief Pan.
Chief Pan has added something to his report. I think he'd like to talk about it a little bit.
I haven't given permission, but he can do so.
So the um, I think there's, I think there's a better way to present the data from the police department. Um, and the the initial two reports that you have there are just our our basic incident reports, which gives you, you know, a list of offenses that took place during that time and the numbers of those offenses that have occurred. Um, I I would, I would suggest that moving forward, um, we we look at trends like what, you know, from month to month or year to year. Um, and and where we're at with crimes or, you know, statistics to compare about. You know, rather than just a list, a long list of of um of different types of offenses and things that doesn't really give you a lot of information. And I think it it may help you more um to to see how we're doing as a community and as a police department. If we have, if we put together some metrics based on these data, on this data. Um, we'll put it into, you know, graph form and show you, you know, how we're progressing, you know, are the officers. Um, how active are the officers being? Are they, are they more active now than they were last year or five years ago? What's the trend? Um, in in the community, like if you take domestic disputes, that may be a good one to look at. Um, it's it's very tightly feeling for officers. It's the kind of things that disrupts the neighborhood. You know, are we looking at those and seeing how we're doing with those? Um, disturbance calls, those types of things. But rather than just this big long list, we could, we can really pick out some things that that really matter, that really, you know, are good indicators that you think are good indicators for this community of quality of life issues or, you know, performance factors for the police department. So um, after after those initial primary offense um reports that um that I concluded, I just gave a couple of examples of of ways that we can present data. Um, and this is very easy. This is, this didn't take, you know, hours and hours and put together. It was a simple request from the um from Kane County to say, hey, let's look at our our calls for service for the past five years and um a total cost for service for now. And it put, we put it into a bar graph to show you where we're at and what the trends are, how we're doing. So for example, um, you know, if you look back just a few years, our um our cost of service five years ago were actually significantly higher than they are right um in the past few years. But if we look at this year, um, the cost of service, you know, that the bottom the bottom line or the bottom bar graph there is the current year and and really the trend is going to be up there. Um, we had a big dip in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Um, there, you know, it increased, but this year we'll be back up there around five thousand calls for service or a little bit higher for the year. Um, I think those are important things to take into account when we were talking about uh future funding and growth and, you know, staffing at the police department and all sorts of um ideas. And then the next graph is um, I should say those types of topics, not ideas. Um, and then the next graphic I thought was interesting just to say, just to show when we're looking at staffing at the police department, um, you know, what times of the day are are we getting most of our calls? And you can see on there from, uh, really from midnight to um look at this different here. From midnight till about six in the morning, we really, you know, the the calls decline down to five and six are 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 the slowest times of the day. And then right away, it starts to pick up at seven. And then and then really the call stays steady throughout the day until um, until ten, eleven o'clock at night. Um, but one of the things that I've been looking at is is where our where our staff is throughout the throughout the twenty-four hour period of the day, where, you know, where we have more staff working and when we have less staff working and what, you know, what do we really need to do? Um, for example, right now, there's, there's a couple of days a week where we, by policy or by practice, we reduce the staffing um during certain hours. And and then when I look at this, I can see, well, really, there's, we should shift that and reduce staffing at a different time of the day than rather you know, when some of our busiest peak times, when we're saying, okay, it's it's okay to reduce the staffing there to, you know, allow the officers to have time off or whatever. So um, I guess what I'd like to do moving forward is just, is just present more, what to me is more usable data rather than a list of
Can we still have the list though?
We can, yeah.
Because the your your target is going to change continuously with the new subdivisions, people moving in, people moving out. Uh, we'll be able to get a a blend over a period of time, but um uh these are the true numbers.
Yeah, well, the the bar, the graphs will reflect the true numbers. Okay. But that, and that's where I would suggest like, you know, okay, so what are we really looking at? When, if if you're looking at how how the the burden or the workload on the police department is increasing as we increase the population, increase the number of residents. You know, what are those offenses that that are the best indicators of, you know, that increased workload or demand? You know, or is it, you know, juvenile nuisance problems, neighborhood problems, domestic disputes? Um, you know, disturbance, general disturbance calls. Um, those are, those are the types of things, traffic accidents. Um, those are the types of things that would indicate to me that that workload is increasing, that we really need to keep an eye on. It's, I think for me, from a board perspective, I I really appreciate the data-driven approach, so thank you for that. What would be interesting is, and maybe it's a quarterly or every six months when you have time to do it, but the the follow-up analysis of, like, if I look at your calls by hour at seven PM this year, or seven AM this year is a spike. What were the type of calls during that hour? What what are we seeing that's leading to some of those times being higher than others? And are there things that the board needs to consider or or work with the police department on to help maybe mitigate some of whatever that may be, right? I'm looking at that and immediately I'm thinking, okay, school's back in. Is it school related as far as traffic incidents or speeding or things like that, right? Um, you know, we can use things as far as communicate. If if we see a consistent problem at times of the day, maybe we have a communication plan to help try to offset that so that there aren't um, but that would be a really interesting, like what your analysis is based on this information. Maybe it's every six months or I don't know the right frequency, but your, sorry, analysis and recommendation. And I and I would say, you know, community partners, not just the the board trustees, but also you know, are there community partners that we can involve in some of that problem solving to to reduce, you know, like nine-one-one hangups is a good example. You know, if we have a business or a a location where we're repeatedly having nine-one-one hangups, we can work with that, you know, with that business owner to to reduce them. You know, or figure out what the problem is instead of just continuing to go back over and over and over again.
Well, I see alarm activations are always seeming to be high.
Those are
And we, you know, we passed an ordinance that says, hey,
And we, you know, we passed an ordinance that says, hey, you only get so many of them and then we start charging you, but that still doesn't deter just their 300 from setting alarm on.
Well, are we charging them?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and they're not happy about it.
Why change?
No, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that maybe it's not high enough. It's not, it's not a deterrent, they make a lot of the calls.
That's okay. They pay, right?
Yes, they do.
But I think that's part of it, right, is when you, when you identify, hey, alarm, false alarms is a big burden on the department, what can we do? Okay, let's pass an ordinance that charges the responsible party for that kind of thing. Maybe it deters some people, maybe it doesn't deter others, but there may be other things like that that we can look at and say, how do, how do we help or how do other communities or organizations help?
Yes. And you just said they're not. Still happening.
Right, so, yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, maybe, maybe we come up with a different rate for businesses or large organization, look at ordinance and say, okay. If your, if your, if your alarm is for a business and you have X amount of employees or it's X amount of square feet, or it's going to take, you know, maybe a square foot approach, because that's how you would determine how long your officers are going to be there if they have to walk the whole building. Maybe we raise the price per square foot, you know, because a normal house or an average house is less than 3,000 square feet or whatever it is in our community, 3,600 square feet, I think is one of the bigger ones, right? But then you get into an industrial space and the police have, and it's after hours, there's two officers that, correct me if I'm wrong, there's two officers that are dispatched and they have to walk that whole building to ensure that it's safe. That time of night, that can take 20 minutes, it can take an hour.
What kind of fine is invoked now?
It's like, it's like 50 bucks or something like that, it's not.
No, I mean, it escalates, right? So if you, you're allowed so many, like you said, but I think that if you, I don't know, they, the D300 pays us a lot of money.
Oh, okay.
We can get back to you on what.
We, we passed it recently since I've been here, we passed it because of that. I mean, it's, it's, it's really, in all things considered, it's a nominal thing for the amount of time it goes out here. But the thing of it is, is if you look at the monthly reports every month, you see like this month, I think it was like 12. And you think about this, if there's three officers on shift and there's two of them walking a building that really is okay, and then there's a domestic, that means that third officer is going to a domestic by him or herself.
No, it can't.
Well, that's what happens.
Yeah, no, you have to have two for domestic by law.
I, I understand that, but that's not what's happening. I'm sorry. But. No, I understand what you're saying, but that's, that's the type of burden that we have at the police department, that's the type of burden we have everywhere else, and so we need to figure out a way to kind of curb it.
Chief Pan, if somebody's going to walk through an empty building, they're going to go, something more important, they get home.
Right, okay, but if it's on the other side of the world, there's still, what's wor, what worries me the most?
You've got all these new housing projects, look, look at these two pages for the month, you got all these new housing projects moving in, this is going to double.
Well, that's, that's why I brought up, and I know it's part of your long-term plan on staffing and looking at the village, but as we do these developments, that's part of the consideration we should really look at, where smaller lot sizes is one thing, if that's what the market wants, fine, but the smaller lot sizes means 700 more homes. And what does that mean for the services?
1,400 plus two more people.
So those kind of considerations, and I understand the talk track of, or I shouldn't say talk track, but the comment, because he's absolutely correct, it means 700 more homes of property tax. I also know that it's, our property, 700 homes of property tax may not cover the additional costs.
Well, we have other development fees.
Understood, yeah, we would get, we would get transition fees and impact fees, because any additional home in that subdivision were not pre-made.
In theory, all of our development pays for itself, you know, they put in all the public improvements and then we get fees, but we continue to do that analysis.
Yeah.
Because I did, I mean, even with watching all the parks and I think about Trusty Coth going about all the vandalism in the parks and, you know, should we have officers that are going, you know? So I see all those parks and they're beautiful and I thought, yeah, that's a lot of patrolling of parks, too.
Well, you, you guys are looking at 10 or 20 years in the, in the future before this development finishes, it's 2,200 homes total.
Yeah.
So we're, we're, we're just scratching the surface.
Yeah, I, I understand that and I agree with you, but I think this board has done a really good job in its time being here of trying not to create a mess that somebody else is going to have to clean up, because we've had our share of that.
I feel like we're still doing.
What do you mean?
Cleaning up a mess.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, so.
We're getting there, but it's still.
And I think we're like overly cautious, everybody that sits here is overly cautious of creating a situation that somebody else is going to have to deal with later.
One example you used, last year during our capital planning, we, we mapped out when we were going to need another snowplow around. So we've already budgeted in the capital budget for another snowplow and another person to drive that snowplow. Chief Pan is working on a formula for estimating, calculating how many, how many residents, how many police officers we need per population. Now, every time's a little different, our geography's a little different, but we have gone, when I, when I arrived here, I think we had nine active police officers at the time, we now have 14. We had several vacancies and we've added two additionally. I think we're very well-staffed right now, we have one vacancy right now that is going to be filled soon, we believe. So there's a lot going on.
Chief, I want to thank you, I mean, because Dad is always good and helps us to plan him. But there was one glaring thing that hit me in reading this is that he had one speeding ticket. One.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't, when I saw that, I was surprised myself.
I, I mean, because I know, I mean, looking back at other months, I mean, it'd be interesting to see, but I'm like, one, and then there was one.
No, it was under construction. This was under construction.
It may be, the one thing I will say is that maybe only occur, you know, the only one reported on here because it was a more significant one. I have to look at the report to see.
Because there's, there's the speeding over the statutory limit, so what was that, 601?
That was a longer cycle.
And then the other one at the top is 601.5A, so that's 26 to 35 over, so there are two different statutes, so I thought, one. And then in the next one, which is two weeks, we only, we have zero. And, you know, not that I would ever go over the speed limit. But wow, you know, I'm just amazed, so I'm like, I just wonder if there was a glitch someplace or there's too many breaks for our officers that they're catching speeders.
No, you're going to be out on the streets, those guys are out on the streets all day long.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, believe me, I know they are.
I think there is some truth, though, too, to what Trusty Coth said, and that we have been under construction for so many months, so.
That they can see through it down.
You could see it in a lot of places.
And Chief Pan has already started analyzing each one of these incidents.
Okay.
With the timeline, like year-to-date over the last five years, so we'll have some more charts for it, probably, probably be reported every, every board meeting rather than just once a month with it.
I really like it.
I do.
I really like it. Now, you, your, your question was, what kind of information do we want to see? Okay, now how do you want to work that process? Do you want to present or work with staff and come up with metrics? Or do you want us to look over the report and email you, like, ideas of what we'd like to see? I, I just want to know, because you posed a question to the board, and so, I mean, we can also go through J2, it doesn't matter to me how, how we play this, but you asked a question, so how do we answer your question?
You got the numbers and the graphs, right?
I mean, I guess if you. We could, I mean, we could start off with, I could start off reporting on, on all of it. I don't know, I, I just think it would be, it'd be a better indicator if we, if we narrowed it down. So, so maybe if we took a look over the offenses and maybe we could just look them over and make suggestions for next month. That's what I was planning to do next month, but if you see, if the board members see anything on the report right now, yes, specifically.
Was this hard to do to?
No.
No. End the graph?
No, neither, neither are.
You got the, you got the mouse, and what was end the graph?
No, I understand that, but what, what he was suggesting was is that he's not going to do a graph, you're not going to do a graph on every offense, are you?
That's what I'm suggesting is being narrowed down. That's right, so there's certain events on here that each one of you find interesting and are important, let us know what they are, send me a note.
Yeah. I would actually ask that, this, I'm just speaking for myself, that you point out to us which ones you think are the most interesting because of, they take the most time for an officer to respond or they, they require the most resources for response. Because what I might find interesting, or Trusty Palastre, or Trusty Mott, may not align with what you find is interesting for a variety of reasons. So I, I would almost look to you to, to make the suggestion of, in this month, I'd like us to focus on these couple of offenses and here's why, and here's what we're seeing. Concerns or opportunities.
Indicators of, I know no crime is good, but what crimes are more acceptable in a. Just going to call. You know, like, if you're getting more speeding tickets than domestic assaults, obviously you're probably in a better community. If you're getting way more domestic assaults than speeding tickets, then there's a problem going on, right? So I mean, I don't know what type of crime to really focus in on, like, I don't know all of these statutes, so maybe there's some on here that I, I would be interested in, that's why, I don't know.
We could, I could break it, I could break it down to, into, so there's like performance indicators for the police department, you know, activity indicators, that sort of thing. And then there's, and then there's, you know, those calls for service that are not self-initiated, that are really driven by the community. You know, you have the higher, higher profile traffic offenses like DUI, you know, we, we want to watch those.
Of course.
But when it comes to, you know, it's really those crimes of, the, the crimes that make people concerned, you know? And I, I know when you look at, when you look at communities, that like aggravated assaults typically are one of the, are one of the primary indicators of, that people look at for a safe community. And I mean, we don't have any, unless it's, unless it's part of that domestic, I mean, if, if we started having a lot of domestic batteries, that could be, you know, that could report as an aggravated assault. But I mean, really that type of crime, there's not a lot that takes place here. But in, in, I think it's just things that, things that we know are good indicators of, of how the community is, you know, the temperature, the atmosphere, you know?
Right, right.
So we can, we can, we'll come up with some suggestions. All right. We'll take a couple of specifics and we'll give you a year-to-date by month and then we'll give you the last five years by year.
Two approaching it this way would, in addition to those main concern areas, identifying the anomalies, right? So trend line says it should be here, past two months, we've seen a spike, need to dig into what's going on in that area, right?
Right.
And it may not be a normal KPI that you look at or you're saying, hey, this is one that you really want to track, like a aggravated assault. But if all of a sudden there's a spike in one specific area, it's like, okay, what's happening here, right? That would be, I think that may be something interesting, too, and things that we could help you out with, or help Mr. Hedge out with.
I really appreciate it, I just didn't want you to pose a question that we didn't. So I appreciate it, this was great. Any other questions about the reports?
Can I, I just want to ask, but the, it just hit me with the overdue bill, overdue water bill program, what happened with that? Just, just an update, do we have a lot of people that are on that list or everything's done?
Are you talking about the COVID part?
Oh, the COVID piece, that program is finished. Yes, so we still have several residents that are on payment loans, but nothing residual from that.
Okay, I just was, I was watching on the water stuff and I'm like, I wonder if we got that done, so. That was just a, a comment, the other little comment then, which I was just amazed, was the investment income is astronomical in each one of the funds.
Yeah, so.
I want to know where we're investing.
Well, honestly, we have a significant amount of money, MFT money, some of our state, state sales tax, you know, that we receive from the state, as well as income tax and those types of intergovernmental type of receipts. At US Bank, through the Illinois Funds, it's a state treasurer's program. It's a little bit different than that, it's called Illinois Funds, it's for municipalities, that is earning very well. So it's, it's almost like a money market account type of thing, but it must have some kind of securities behind it, because the interest rate has gone tremendously, so.
Because we're looking at 1,700, 1,575, you know, 973%, I mean, it was just, I mean, and that's great.
Yeah.
I just, I had to ask.
At the time of the budget, we were getting like pennies, it was horrible and it really has increased.
So our year-to-date surplus is about? Page 59? So total expense, 322, 485. And we took in 322, 486.
Page 59, you said.
Yeah. So our year-to-date surplus is a buck?
Oh, that's, so those are general fund.
True.
Yeah.
Since we can do a retro on the COVID water bill or utility bill relief program, would, would you say that it helped a lot of residents and it was a successful program, looking back at it? Would you say that? How would you analyze it?
Well, Lori dealt with them more directly than, I mean, it was obvious that the people couldn't pay the bills at the time.
There were, to be perfectly honest, there were residents that were so thankful for this, this was really super, super helpful for, for them. It was very frustrating from my perspective that, you know, I took everybody for their word. There were several residents that are, were what we call regulars, you know, requiring assistance either, you know, like with the bill payment arrangements or outside assistance. So it was without a doubt helpful to them, but I don't know that it was in the spirit of the program, if you know what I mean.
So, but those aside, there was a lot, I, I don't want to use the word a lot, I don't know the number, I don't want to know the number, but there was residents that this helped and was a good.
Without a doubt, yes, absolutely.
I just want to say.
There were, we had a sport was talking to people all at the same time.
I just want to say thank you again. I know that we, we beat that horse to death, that we were one of the last municipalities to do something, but I think it was, it was the right move.
We were, we were the last municipality in this area to start turning water up. We were very, I think we were all very considerate, compassionate, is a better word.
So sorry about the headaches.
No, it was the right thing to do, though.
It was, absolutely.
The headaches are. Those are the things we enjoy doing, helping residents.
Thank you for all your work.
Okay.
Can we go back to Toby's question?
Oh.
So the $1. I just got to go back to that. So, yeah, now that I look at this, if you look at, so all of the impact fees were changed a year ago to become sub-funds of the general fund. They used to be called agency funds, it was a GASB change, so they, you know, flop over here. So the, the, the $1 is actually due to rounding in our township, uh, transition fee thing. So that, that's just the budget, the $1, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, just to clarify.
Okay, I have the accounts payable, it's a big number. Get over.
So I just want to make a point of clarification, if I can get down to that page, there we go. The amalgamated bank entry, we're going to change the description on the payee for that. We wire transfer our IEPA loan payments to amalgamated bank, they service the lockbox for the IEPA. So we actually will write a check to the Illinois IEPA and not send it to them. We will wire the trans, wire transfer, excuse me, ACH the money to amalgamated. So ultimately, they receive the funds, but they are not the payee, the village is not paying amalgamated bank at all. That was input incorrectly.
So are you reading Trusty Palastre's mind?
I'm trying to, no. It says wastewater project right there, so.
Oh, so she didn't take the question from me?
No. You see, you see a lot of pink on mine, it's just something that grabs my attention, it doesn't mean it's a question, and I have no questions.
This is a pro.
No, I don't, that gets in the minutes.
And you're feeling okay?
No, I just, sometimes something surprises you and you're like, oh, wow.
I will take, I will take, most to approve the accounts payable. So. Questions, comments? Mr. Tepi, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Palastre?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, sir.
BDC report, please. B D C report, please.
All right, B D C met on October twelfth, uh, we welcomed our newest B D C members, Commissioner Rayo and Commissioner Martin. Uh, so we had a full commission and the all-in-person.
And a full dive.
And a full, we were all here, so it was great. Um, so we talked about a couple of things, we got an update on the downtown street scape, thank you, Mr. Hedges, for that. Uh, we also went through the beautification committee report, which was updates on each of the current um, facade grant projects that are happening, so just to catch this board up, blocks, the painting is done, the rest of the update is in progress, including masonry. Uh, Garden Berry Cafe, uh, is, which is the building across the street, we're working very hard not to continue to call it the old business, but to start referring to it as a new business, which is Garden Berry. Um, the final contractor has been accepted and will commence work in the coming weeks. There was a contractor change, but the project didn't change. And the contractor changed because the original agreed-to one was no longer available, so it was delaying the project, so they found another one to do the exact same work. Um, the cave facade update is in progress, including roofing and gutters, I think those are the last two things that they have.
Looks pretty good.
I know, yeah, pretty good.
Can we go back to Garden Berry, when it happened again? You know? Well, they're, they're applying for permits now, the interior, interior work, I keep forgetting, that's the B D C, but yes, interior work is moving along really well.
Right, right, right.
Uh, the exterior, he, he planned on starting this week, uh, but they had to, uh, complete their permits, so, sorry, there was a meeting just yesterday, Josh had a meeting.
That was one of the things I liked about the contractors, the contractor was ready, they just needed to get permits to kick off the project.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay, because that'll come back to a discussion about celebrating, uh, the downtown area, something that was discussed. Uh, Hampshire, Hampshire Social, the last update was exterior works are almost complete, the interior work is in progress, and their anticipated grant opening is expected near Christmas. Um, and so they're, they're getting pretty close to just focus on the inside, which is good, that's coming.
And Garden Berry hopes to be open during the month of November.
Yeah. Um, our next topic, we talked about the long-term strategy for the B D C, the next step for us on that is we've, we've kind of collated what the themes or the topics and then what the goals were of this long-term strategy. Now, just a reminder to the board, the idea is that the B D C is gonna bring this together and make a recommendation to this board for considerations in a long-term strategy, that's what this is, we're not setting it for the village, we're creating a recommendation. So the next step in that is rather than spending hours at each meeting, um, there was Commissioner, uh, Pizzolato made a great suggestion and put together a survey, so all the B D C members are now staggering on each of the different focuses under each theme of what we think would be most important versus least, and then he, he's gonna collate those and come up with what at the next B D C meeting, what the average was as far as that. We talked about the schedule for Hampshire Berry Homes, so if the, yeah, it's in the minutes if anyone wants to know, uh, but we've got that planned out for, it looks like, about the next eight months. Uh, and thank you again to Jeanie Mayer for volunteering her time to write all of those and interview the businesses. Uh, we also had an update on new and existing, uh, businesses, we talked about new commercial businesses in town, including Hearts Lounge, Hampshire Social, Garden Berry, and Alfonso's, we don't wanna forget about Alfonso's, who's gonna be opening up, it's the new pizza place. We talked about the logistics park update, and then also there's a, uh, potential food truck businesses loo- looking to locate in between the chicken dip and the business to the east. Um, where it would be, they would create the food out of that area, the food truck, it's not a permanent food truck, it would be, think of it almost, it sounds like a commissary, where they'd make a lot of the food. The truck would be parked there as its home, but it would go off, or be whatever.
Actually, they would have one truck parked there, and then multiple trucks that would go to other locations.
Yeah, so they, the business owns multiple food trucks that would go out, and then one would be a permanent.
And the B D C is aware that we have ordinance on food trucks, that they can't be in town more than two day, times a week.
This was just an update given to us of a business that's interested in this, this wasn't us making a recommendation on the business.
And yes, they're aware of that.
Um, no, that was what the B D C discussed, but I missed anything, so, okay, any questions for B D C?
When's your next meeting?
Next meeting is the first Wednesday of, when are we, in October, November? Sorry, second, second Wednesday of November, it's always the second Wednesday of the month. So we will continue our discussions.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Public relations, anybody, anybody, got my development meeting, you want to say?
I think you can.
Okay, trustee Mott led our meeting. At the public relations, uh, we, it was, we talked about what to go in the next newsletter. Uh, got, I think, uh, Mr. Rosetti more than maybe will fit, so there's gonna be a
He's kind of panicking still.
There was a long list, so, uh, and thank you, uh, I just wanna thank Stephanie Barone of the Park District, she wrote a recap for trunk-or-treat, she did it last day. It came through email, she, she also sent an updated edited version.
Great.
She actually did it like within a couple of hours of the ask. So phenomenal, um, and we've got some good pictures, so the newsletter was, was discussed, and then we also discussed, uh, Mr. Ray gave a presentation uh, from Tyler Technologies, uh, of suggested marketing approaches for the new app, the new Village of Hampshire.
My Hampshire.
The My Hampshire app.
Yeah.
That will be available in November. Launch date TBD, uh, but we will have a launch date.
Will be the newsletter, it's the cover story for the newsletter, as you guys recommended.
Yes, but I don't know if we set the date in there yet, and if we did, I didn't have the date.
Well, that was the impression, I was given the impression it was for this newsletter, so I wrote the article today.
Yes, yes, the idea was to have it in the, the article, in the newsletter, and in that article, once you, staff had a discussion of what the realistic launch date was, that that would be in the newsletter of its launching on this.
So, once the, once the newsletter goes out, people are gonna have it, they, they're gonna go get it.
Perfect, so you get the newsletter, you'll be able to download it, it's the My Hampshire app, it's on
I think that, I think the headline was Download My Hampshire Now.
Okay, cool.
Something like that.
Um, and it is available on the iTunes, uh, or the Apple App Store, as well as the Google Play Store.
iTunes.
I will wait back, sorry. Um, so there is that, uh, what else did we discuss, was that it? Just those two things, right?
Yes, just those two things, and, uh, just for, uh, Toby, the that park bench, uh, uh, has been, you up to date with everything that's going on?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I was supposed to form today, so the window's closed.
But it was, it was decided where it was gonna be, everything else, you know all about that, Corey.
Yeah.
You know, okay, Laura Short, uh, uh, and Steve Austin from the Lions Club, they've been talking about it, and the funds are there, and, and I, I the last time we spoke about it was you, you were looking for a date when they wanna do it. The funds are there now, and they're, I believe they've already picked a site where they want it, and it's go, right now.
Yeah, I was supposed to, that was all set up to, uh, excavate Tuesday, frame and prep Wednesday, for today. Unfortunately, with the cold weather setting in, uh, it probably won't happen.
And then basically
You have a good chat. Mr. Ray, anything else to add?
Sir.
Public Works, the only I got is Jake went and took some pictures, posted it. Um, one of the, one of the trucks, the whole back end of it was rotted out. Um, a new bed was, I believe, seventy-some thousand, the repair was gonna be forty-some thousand, because they had to cut all rotten steel out, weld new stuff on, and our animal over there, Adam did it for a grand.
It'll be, it'll be in the Public Works report for next month.
Okay.
I mean, next meeting, we should
Yeah, he cut all the bad stuff out, uh, welded all new, I mean, the truck's solid, I painted it.
We should do a posting about that or something, because people like to see us being frugal, not frugal, but smart enough.
Or, or just celebrating great work of employees.
But it happens over there all the time.
Absolutely, I mean, but to highlight, his name's Adam.
We don't want him stolen. He's great.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna not talk about the guy, because
I am.
I mean, yeah.
Is this an average case, we'd never say anything nice about you?
I don't, I don't want any Facebook, trust me.
Steve, you know, you just did, right?
No, please.
But we're gonna, we should have, we're gonna have a Public Works meeting pretty soon, because what I'd like to do is, is because of the volume of money that they are saving, um, I'd like to, uh, have like an Employee of the Month every two months.
Oh, really?
Yes, well, sounds better Employee of the Month. That way the guys are getting recognized.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because yeah, they, they do a good job.
Anyone else? New business or other announcements?
No reports for my team.
You were saying something. You sure? So, um, I have this wonderful shirt on, you guys may have noticed, um, so we did the cop on top a few months back, and so mayors of Gilbert's, uh, and Mayor Gilbert's and the mayor of Hampshire, President of Hampshire, wherever I am, were sparring online, and we were trying to raise more money than each other, and they stomped all over us, they raised about four thousand dollars more than we did. So congratulations to them, but as my penance, I had to wear this shirt, so, guy, this one's for you. Anyhow.
We get to burn it after the meeting?
I would not, we would never do something like that, it doesn't, it's angry on it, does it? Anyhow, that's all I have.
Uh, I think the truck-or-treat, uh, event went off very well. The Lions Club said, I think they, uh, did like twelve hundred, a hundred dollars, I think.
Holy cow.
Wow.
Yeah, there, there were people that were in line that said they had waited almost an hour from being down Jefferson to get to the first trunk, they still had a great time, the kids had a great time, but that's how long the line went down Jefferson, just trying to get into State Street.
There was a person in a cute avocado costume, I don't know if you saw that, but, um, they stood there for, I couldn't believe how long, they just were like visible and standing there.
Um, I think the most popular was probably the Sanderson sisters, yeah, I've got the photos, so congrats to that.
We had fun.
Right next to the Lions Club, okay.
Yeah, the wind was blowing in the right way, you'd think one of the Lions could have walked down with a hot dog. Because we were all, we were all downwind of the hot dogs.
How many hot dogs did you guys, uh, do?
Twelve, twelve hundred.
I only had one.
After one, no there.
You know, if you keep clerking, you might be the fourth Sanderson sister.
The street was totally down Washington, and pictures were all out, the tossing was a fact, right?
It was good, the weather was good, it was a great event.
Maybe next year doing four hundred and two hours.
Well, that's, I mean, it's a suggestion for the Park District, and I think the library, right?
It's all over as of this time of year.
But I know the Park District.
It was a group effort, it was a death-out day group effort. Well, with that, I will adjourn motion to adjourn. Really? I have it first, not gonna questions, comments, concerns, Mr. Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coles?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Trini?
Hi.
Mr. Bass, on zero.
Oh, here. I really thought you'd have been first.